For the city of Allentown for today, November 9th, 2023. Prior to tonight's meeting, an informational executive session was held to discuss the reorganization of the business office, review with labor council, the status of negotiations with the food service union, the evaluation of the superintendent, and confidential matters pertaining The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the agenda or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting so that if you wish to comment tonight, you want to do that now. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. We will now have roll call. Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Harris. Ms. Matheson.
Here.
Ms. Noel Brown.
Yeah.
Ms. Ortiz.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Present.
Dr. Santana.
Here.
Ms. Wilt.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Present.
Ms. Conover. Seven board members present.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I present the presence to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you.
Reaction for the record is eight board members present.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, you have some remarks and maybe some introductions?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, school board directors, to members of the public, all of our families and students, as well as my team. Tonight, we called a special board meeting to recognize and officially approve the 2023-24 Student Representatives, the School Board of Directors for the Allentown School District. Before I read their names, we have a talented group that's coming before us from the Rob Middle School, our Rob cheer team, in the direction of Coach Lay. And I think Principal Delgado is gonna come join the team as well.
They got the chance.
[laughing]
Well, you don't mess with me, do you? Right. [inaudible] They can produce exactly what you want. I'm gonna watch. [inaudible] 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 And these are our jewels. Let's give another round of applause for the Rob Ravens!
Next time, Dr. Burks is gonna get out there and do a little step.
[laughing]
Oh, no, not in their shoes. So, but I'm so excited to see our students perform tonight. As you know, as a district, we've made a huge investment in bringing back the arts into our curricula for our middle and our elementary and middle school students. And so it is here where building the foundation for them to be great artists on all levels. And so I'm just so excited. I want to thank Coach Lay again, as well as Principal Delgado and the entire Rob Middle School team. And I'm just so excited. And the young lady, it was good to see, it was so exciting to see them so excited and happy about the dancing and having a good time. And we know holistically, we're working on fostering the whole child, both their academic success as well as their social emotional wellness. So I'm so excited tonight. So let's give them another round of applause. I do want to say, this room is standing room only, and we'd like to invite all of you to every single meeting. So for all the people here, we're gonna give them a round of applause, letting them know we appreciate them. So as I mentioned in the beginning of my remarks, we've called the special meeting this evening so that we can acknowledge and recommend the students who have been recommended by their peers as well as various committees to serve as leaders in our district. So these particular students, we will recommend for the school board's consideration. That will come about later on in the meeting, but I'll just mention their names right now. For our regular school board of directors, we have Jamir Chatham and Allison Morales from William Allen High School. Kayden Sprayberry and Nina Rivera from Deraf High School. Kimberly, oh, yes, well, they're gonna, they can stand, they're gonna stand later, but you can stand now if you'd like. Yes, please stand. Everyone that I've called, I'll go back. So, Jamir Chapman. And Allison Morales. And Kayden is standing already, Nina, as well as Kimberly Arias and Ariali, thank you, Rodriguez Enriquez. Okay, let's give them a round of applause. These students will represent us on the committees of the whole. We have Afonso Jaquez and Damaya Blakely from William Allen High School. Nina Rivera and Kayden Sprayberry, again, Deraf High School. Go, Kayden.
[laughing] And Nina.
Andric Lopez and Josiah Haynes from Building 21. Thank you. Maybe say that. These students will represent us on the Human Relations Commission. They are Grace McCowen and Molly Giordano, William Allen High School. Jeremiah Arroyo and Jade Wilson from Deraf High School. Elianes De Leon Rivera and Brian Gonzalez Cruz from Building 21. These students will represent us on the Allentown School District's foundation. Kiara Larama and Jania Santos, Janaya Santos, sorry about that. William Allen High School. Jade Wilson and Jeremiah Arroyo from Deraf High School. Tyshaun Johnson and Promise Swift Ford from Building 21 High School. That clap and those claps were so weak. Let's give a roaring round of applause for our student leaders. Okay, now we're here with a group that wants to have a good time and celebrate our team. Okay. Before we officially, or the board officially approves these students, I do have a few more items that I would like to address this evening. So during the week of October 30th, I had two successful advisory meetings, one with the superintendent's parent advisory council, and I'm so excited, the launch of the superintendent's parent advisory council. There are 45 members of that group, so I want to thank all those families who are part of it, as well as the superintendent's student advisory council, in which we have about four, so I have to run the numbers along the way. We have 45 students who are part of the superintendent's student advisory council and 25 families who are part of the superintendent's parent advisory council. So I'm so honored for you to serve as advocates and advisors to me, and some of them are also our student board representatives. So let's please give them a round of applause for the ones that served. These groups will serve as, again, as advisors and ambassadors in helping us to move our continuous improvement efforts forward. On Tuesday, November 14th, we will host our next You Are the Light celebration at Trexler Middle School, and that will be held at 3:45. And each month, we recognize a student as well as a staff member from each of our schools. And this year, we've added alumni, so if you are an alumni or alumnus of our district, we will, you may be someone to be acknowledged, so look for our phone calls or our email messages, and we want to recognize you. And if you, if anyone would like to recommend individuals within our community who are part of, who are an alumnus or alumni of our district, please let us know. This will be held at, again, Trexler, did I say Trexler? Yeah, school. And then we also, that evening is the kickoff to one of the great efforts that came out of my superintendent's parent student advisory council from last year, in which they said they needed jobs. They said, "Look, Dr. Burks, we need some money." And I said, "Really?" They said, "Yes, we want some money this summer." And so as a result of that, we created an internship, the Allentown Student Youth Internship Corps, and last summer, we hired about 125 students. And this year, we're excited, we will also employ more than 100 students, the district as well as our community partners, so that those students will also have their unveiling at the You Are the Light ceremony. So anyone who's listening, you are welcome to come, and we're gonna have a great time that evening. The first meeting of our homelessness task force will take place on Thursday, November 16th at AAM. The district will convene a group of community leaders, and we will work on strategizing and develop a plan for home, to combat homelessness within our district and within our overall community. And if you are interested, you can please email Mr. Ronald Simison, and he is the superintendent's special assistant at Simison R. at Allentown School District, and he'll take your name and pass it along to the Ms. Pollock and Dr. Roth, who are convening this group for us. This week, the district was participated in instructional rounds, and we, or are being led, we had two sessions led by Dr. Lee Tito, who is a renowned professor, practitioner. He's worked internationally with school districts on their continuous improvement efforts. He recently retired from Harvard University, so we are honored that Dr. Tito is leading these efforts with us, helping us to improve our practices. We're looking at our coll, coming up with common approaches and common understanding of how we improve the learning and teaching that takes place in the district. So we met at Trexler this week, and we, as well as, I'm forgetting the school, I gotta look at my notes. Oh, Sheridan, at Sheridan School. And tomorrow, we will have a group of educators, so there are about 45 of us, and we go into classrooms, so tomorrow, we will be at Building 21. And we are basically calibrating our thinking about instructional practices, and we will scale up this effort across the district throughout the year. This Saturday, November 11th, is Veterans Day. Let's give a round of applause for veterans. Want to say we thank all the veterans for your service, your commitment, and your sacrifice to our great country. We have many veterans who serve in our district, so we want to thank you for your leadership and service here in our district. And tomorrow, at Sheridan Elementary School, there will be a program held in honor of all the veterans, and we're excited that one of our school board directors will provide remarks, and we wanted to keynote speakers there and her brother. So let's give Ms. Ortiz a round of applause. That concludes my remarks for this meeting.
At this time, we are only taking public comments on agenda items. Do we have any comment cards?
Not on agenda items.
May I have a motion for the approval of the board of directors' report?
Some of it.
Is there a second?
I second.
And there's a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Matheson.
Yes.
Ms. Noel Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mr. Palmer.
Yes.
Dr. Santana.
Yes.
Ms. Wilt.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Conover. Seven. Seven zero, motion passed.
Okay. And that officially gives us our...
Now, that officially says that you are officially student board representatives for the 23-24, so please give them a round of applause. We'd like to invite our school leaders to come. They will present our students, and if the students, when your name is called, and why don't we have them come up here, and the school board of directors will present them with their gifts? So if the school board directors could please stand here in the center, please. And we're going to call Ms. Petronio to begin with once our school board directors assemble in the center of the room. In the semicircle and the whatever it's called right now, the way this room looks. We also, we'd like to call the individuals who are on the regular school board, we'd like to have them called first, and then if we could, after we do the regular school board, we'll come back and we'll invite our colleagues and partners from the Allentown Foundation, when those group of students call, because I think we're gonna take some photos, so we'll do that. We'll call the Human Rights Relations Commission next, if, can you follow that, Principal Petronio?
Okay.
All right. I think I understand.
Okay.
I would like to welcome Nina Rivera. Nina is excited to be the primary board representative for Deraf High School. Nina is a leader at Deraf High School, serving as the president of Deraf's debate team and the lieutenant governor of Division 16 for the Pennsylvania District Key Club. She is, she is also a member of the Multicultural Leadership Club, National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and Science Honor Society. Outside of school, Nina enjoys writing poetry and prose as a form of creative self-expression. She also collects vinyl records of her favorite artists, and after graduation, she plans to obtain her undergraduate degree in psychology and pursue medical school to become a licensed psychiatrist. Nina will also serve as the alternate for the Education Finance Committee of the whole meetings. You want to do the, the other? All of, all of Deraf, or all of Borden, all of Deraf? Okay. Please welcome, wherever he is, Deraf High School junior Kayden Sprayberry. Kayden will be the primary representative for the Education Finance Committee of the whole meetings. Last year, he served as an alternate for the Allentown School District Foundation meetings and was a member of the superintendent's student advisory council. He is a member of the varsity swim team, chess club, scholastic scrimmage, and debate team. As a member of the National Honor Society, he will participate in various service projects this year. And in his spare time, he enjoys reading, making short films, video editing, 3D modeling, and working out. Kayden would like to attend Brown University for his undergraduate degree in astrophysics astronomy and a PhD in astrophysics focusing on galactic structure to get a job as a professor at an R1 research university. Kayden will also serve as the alternate for the regular board meetings.
Good evening. The first gentleman that we have to introduce actually got sick and had to go home, but I would like to read his bio about him. Our representative is Jamir Chapman. He is a senior and is actually returning for his third term as a representative to the board. Jamir is a member of the entrepreneurship club and volleyball team. Outside of school, he volunteers at Country Meadows of Allentown, a retirement community. His hobbies include photography, listening to music, cooking, and gardening. After graduation, he would like to become a real estate agent. Our next rep is Allison Morales. Allison has served as the alternate board rep for the William Allen High School. She is currently a senior who is part of our Student Government Association, Key Club, Canaries for Life, Junior ROTC, and Prayer Club. Outside of Allen, she is also heavily involved in her church youth group, worship practice, and prayer nights. She enjoys singing, writing, playing volleyball, and leading events. She's also our voice in the morning and afternoon, because she does our morning announcements and afternoon announcements faithfully. Allison is keeping her postgraduate plans open at this time.
Hello and good evening. My name is Jose Rosado, and I am the proud leader at Building 21 High School. Before I introduce our representatives today, I want to extend a shout out and a thank you to our parents and siblings, many of which are here this evening. So serving as regular school board representatives, I begin with our junior Kimberly Arias, who returns for her second term as the primary meeting representative at Building 21 High School. Kimberly is currently attending classes at Lehigh Carbon Community College as part of the early college program. She is a part of the William Allen High School girls' basketball team, and in her downtime, she enjoys reading. After high school, Kimberly plans to study business in college and wants to continue Unfortunately, our alternate was under the weather this evening, unable to join us, and I'll introduce her nonetheless. That would be Eliane Rodriguez Enriquez. She will serve as the alternate board rep for Building 21 High School. She is a sophomore who belongs to the debate club and hopes to study to become a judge either here or in her native Dominican Republic. In her spare time, she finds calm by baking and journaling. She also serves on the superintendent's advisory council.
You already did Deraf, something's missing. Can we have the whole?
All right, now Afonso, come on up. Here at William Allen High School, Afonso Jaquez will serve as our primary representative for the Education Financial Committee of a whole. Afonso is very involved in extracurricular activities at Allen as part of DECA, NJROTC, track and field, key club, debate, theater, SGA, and National Honor Society. You got to see our great production last year, he was in our great production of Little Shop of Horrors. His other interests includes music, theater, sports, linguistic studies. After graduation, he plans to join the U.S. Navy as a commissioned officer through the United States Naval Academy, majoring in cyber operations. After five years of service as a commissioned officer, he can use his knowledge of engineering in the supply chain management field. Next is Damaya Blakely. She's a senior at William Allen High School. She was served on the Education Finance Committee of the Member of a Whole. She is a member of the girls' volleyball team and dance academy, which we'll get to see perform here shortly with our Veterans Day tribute. She's a member of the House of God Church. After graduation, she wants to study to become an FBI agent or a judge.
Serving the Human Relations Commission committee.
Committee.
Committee of the whole. My mistake. Serving the committee of the whole at Building 21, I have Andric Lopez, a junior at Building 21 High School. Biggest part of the art club and the 21st Century Program and student advisory council. He enjoys music and would like to attend colleges to study art and music. Alternate to Andric is sophomore Josiah Haynes. Josiah is a member of the Building 21 Dungeons and Dragons Club, Upward Bound, and enjoys art and drawing in his free time. After high school, he would like to attend colleges to study engineering. He also serves on the superintendent's advisory council.
And we would invite members of our ASDF Foundation to come up and join us for the photo and Okay, I'd like to welcome Jade Wilson. Okay, I'd like to welcome Jade Wilson. A, a junior Jade will serve as the primary representative to the Allentown School District Foundation Board from Dear of High School. Jade is a member of Husky Harmony Choir and Debate Team. She is a big future ambassador and regularly donates and volunteers with her mother at the mission. She enjoys puzzles and board games that challenge her mind. Jade's postgraduate plans include attending Spelman College as a pre-law major with a sociology minor. She will also serve as the alternate representative to the Human Relations Commission.
William Allen sophomore Kira LaCron. She will serve as our primary representative to the Allentown School District Foundation. Kira has a passion for the arts and is involved in the William Allen High School Choir, Drama, Theater Club, Orchestra, and Corral. She is also a member of the girls soccer team and tennis team. Outside of school, she's involved in Girl Scouts, Upward Brown, her church choir, and Camp Compass. She also enjoys reading, baking, and painting. She is interested in exploring the career path that would provide her stability, such as an elementary teacher or a podiatrist. But she also allows herself to continue with her creative passion by teaching drama or acting in a musical theater. Our alternative is Denia Santos.
Denia will serve as an alternative representative to the Allentown School District Foundation Board. She's a member of the William Allen Dance Academy. Outside of school, she enjoys singing, writing, and cooking. She would like to go to a four-year college to study criminology or criminal justice where she can also dance.
Building 21 High School sophomore Tayshaun Johnson. Tayshaun writes for the Building 21 Literary Magazine and enjoys the arts, reading, and writing. He plans to attend college after graduation and also serves on the Superintendent Advisory Council. Alternate to Tayshaun, Promise Swift Ford. Promise too is a sophomore who is part of the Allentown Youth Internships Corps. She also serves on the Superintendent Advisory Council. Her favorite subject is math, and after high school, she is considering studying nursing or cosmetology.
Human Relations Commission from Dear of High School. Uh, please help me welcome Jeremiah Arroyo. Jeremiah is a junior at Dear of High School. He is the primary representative for the Allentown School District Foundation Board. Jeremiah is in the Health and Medical Science Program at LCTI and the president of Committees and Fundraising of HOSA, a group for aspiring healthcare professionals. At Dear of, he is a multi-sport athlete on both the soccer and track team. He is also a member of the National Honor Society. He plans to get his EMT license to obtain college credits and eventually pursue a career as a doctor. Jeremiah's creative passions include owning his own clothing brand. Here's a plug, which you can follow on Instagram at cloudeddreams.com. Uh, Jeremiah will also serve as an alternate today, too. Thank you.
Sophomore Grace McElwin. Grace is from William Allen High School and will serve as the primary representative for the City of Allentown's Human Relations Commission. Grace is a member of the Student Government Stage Crew, plays on the girls tennis team. She volunteers at a cat shelter as a way to give back to her local community. Grace enjoys playing tennis, volleyball, and playing piano. After graduating from William Allen, she plans to attend a college to study accounting or finance. Sophomore Molly Giordano. Molly is a sophomore at William Allen High School, where she'll serve as our representative to the Allentown School District's Human Relations. Molly is a member of the varsity volleyball team at William Allen High School in her first year at William Allen. She has a passion for all things food, especially baking. And I can contest that because she's my neighbor and I get samples all the time. Molly also volunteers with her grandmother at the Catholic Charity Soup Kitchen. She is still exploring postgraduate op, options, but would like to have a career in the food services or hospitality industry.
Building 21 Junior Ilhanis, Ilhanis Deleon Rivera. Ilhanis is a passionate advocate for the homeless population. This year, she helped found the school's new dance club. She is also a member of the Art Club. After high school, she hopes to study performing arts and business. Brian Gonzalez Cruz. Brian is a senior who is part of the Art and Dance Clubs. He participates in the 21st Century After School Program. He enjoys music and taking drives in nature. He hopes to continue his education after graduation, studying art and business.
Squishin'. Squishin', make what makes the desire bubble. So some of the, maybe some of the shorter run. And tall, tall friends in the back. Thank you, Ms. Audrey. All right, and then can we all just take a couple steps in towards each other a little bit more? Everybody smile. All right. Think we're okay? And for your book, I need to get some school only, so we can do that. Parents? All right. Thank you. What? We can get that in the hallway. Yeah, the yearbook advisors asked me to grab those. Sure, yeah. There it is, mister. Mister. He's always like come out. Go right in. And then can Tayshaun come this way? There we go. All right, ready, one, two. Twelve point five lines for one second. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Let's give another round of applause for our school, our student leaders and board reps for the year. Going home to do their homework. And their families. We want to thank their families again.
If we can resume the meeting. May I have a motion for approval of the personnel report?
So moved.
Was that so moved?
I'll second.
And there's a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Palmer? Yes. Dr. Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Wilt?
Yes.
Ms. Conover? Ms. Matheson?
Yes.
Ms. Noel Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Ortaas?
Yes.
Seven zero, motion passed.
Thank you. At this time, we are only taking public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any cards?
Yes, we do, Ms. Matheson. Ibolia Balag.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak at the school board. Uh, I am currently serving as the treasurer of the Allentown School District Foundation, which, uh, supports our Allentown School District students and programs. And as treasurer, which I assumed about a year ago, a little over a year ago, I realized that we have provided considerable amount of financial support in advancing our students, uh, programs in schools. Over the time period between 2016 and the most recent fiscal year ended June 2023, uh, the Allentown School District Foundation has raised or processed a total of $6,424,857 to support our students and the programs. Uh, this included a $2 million grant, $2 million grant, which came through during the COVID period, which essentially was a conduit grant that went directly to the school district. However, the foundation, uh, assumed the expense of, of covering the cost of a single audit, which is required for the federal grant from the federal government. And that represents another additional $6,000 that was saved for the Allentown School District. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, that, uh, some of the, the financial impact of the School District Foundation. Thank you.
Tony Muir. Tony Muir.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Hi, uh, my name is Anthony Muir, and I served on, on the Allentown School District Foundation Board for six years and I think four years as the vice presidents. What we've been able to do for the school district over the last 10 to 15 years has been nothing short of extraordinary. I was one of the members of the pilot program for the literacy program, which started at the Lincoln School. And I can tell you from personal experience as a volunteer, sitting down with a kindergarten student for five or 10 minutes can change that self-image of the child. And those of us who've been volunteers in that literacy program, and there have been more than 100 of us, would spend an hour or two a week at, at our many good kindergarten classes in the city of Allentown. And you can make a huge difference. And the foundation has been able to coordinate and recruit a number of volunteers to do this important work. One of the other things that I'm very proud of that the Allentown School District Foundation has done is the Teacher Innovation Grant Program. I think we've given grants to well over, I think it's close to 200 teachers at the moment. And I've attended presentations of those TIG fellows, as we call them, in this room. We would give each of these TIG fellows $1,000 or $1,200 to create an innovative program. And these programs are nothing short of extraordinary. And we reached, uh, on an annual basis, almost half of the school students in the Allentown School District through our TIG programs. They're highly competitive. The teachers have to file an application, which is, um, judged by a volunteer committee. And these programs are in some ways self-perpetuating because if we give a grand of $1,000 or $1,200, the materials are often used again over and over and over again. What we do is we touch all of the STEAM areas. Uh, we have lots of volunteers, probably four or 500 donors. We make an extraordinary contribution to this school district uh, with the, the blessings of the school district, and we hope to continue in that relationship for some period of time. Thank you.
Julie Ambrose.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Julie Ambrose, Executive Director of the Allentown School District Foundation, or ASDF. Thank you for this time and for your consideration. I'd also like to thank members of the Foundation Board and Committees, the many volunteers who support the foundation at events in the schools or from home, and our staff, Ms. Vicki Newhard and Ms. Marcy Carter, as well as past volunteers and employees who have grown this organization from its inception in 2009. Over time, the ASDF has willingly assumed administration of programs such as scholarships at the request of the Allentown School District. We run a robust Teacher Innovation Grant Program that encourages new projects and ideas in our schools. The foundation has compensated for a lack of school funding in Allentown to annually support some of the best ideas from teachers. 2023-24 marks the 14th Teacher Innovation Grants, the 11th Latin Dance Competition, the 10th Science Fair, the 10th Year Supporting the Allentown Drive Middle School Baseball Program, and the 7th Year of the I Am on a Bookshelf Literacy Program for Student Authors. Other initiatives have come and gone as the needs of the Allentown School District changed. My son played cello on New Year's Eve as part of the foundation-funded All-City Orchestra that no longer exists. I emphasize "all city" because the ASDF has long focused on equity. Regardless of leadership changes, networking or fundraising abilities of building leaders, through the foundation, students in all middle schools have access to Latin dance. All middle and high school students receive annual funding for science and performing arts. Students in all elementary schools are exposed to artists in residence, residence on a rotating basis, and teachers in all buildings, including alternative and newcomer academies, have equal access to teacher innovation grants. have equal access to teacher innovation grants. When the ASD announced an emphasis on improving the culture and climate of the schools, we learned from students we served in the fall of 2021 that the Artist Residency Program made 99.97% of student participants feel calm, happy, and/or proud. And in fall of 2022, that number was 94%. This shows that artist residencies contribute to the positive culture and climate of the schools. The ASDF is the foundation for the Allentown School District. We have been a reliable, trustworthy, and stable partner, governed by volunteers who seek no recognition other than respect. This organization has provided over $8.8 million as an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The ASDF Board includes two standing seats, one for a school board member that you select at your reorganization meeting, and one for the superintendent or her designee. We welcome engaged participation. I respectfully request that you use the governance system in place to please share your requests and criticisms where they can be openly addressed so we can all work together for the benefit of each of our 16,741 students. Thank you very much.
Tanya Harris?
Good evening, Allentown School District School Board, parents, students, and friends. My name is Tanya Harris. I'm president of the Allentown School District Foundation. I'm a proud ASD alum, graduating from Allen in 1994 and attending Hiram Dodd and South Mountain Middle School. In addition to being here in a professional capacity, my message is one of personal support for the district and this board, in appreciation for all that it did for me, with acknowledgement that I would not be professionally where I am today without ASD introducing me to my alma mater, Temple University. First, I want to congratulate the students that were selected as student representatives for the Allentown School District Foundation Board. It's an amazing achievement. I'm excited for you to share your thoughts and opinions on how the foundation can continue to support the students of the Allentown School District. And I'm also excited that you have the opportunity to learn the inner workings of a nonprofit organization. For those in the audience who are not familiar with our organization, the foundation was formed in 2009 to help supplement ASD programs that could no longer persist in light of inadequate funding. Since its inception, the foundation has raised nearly $8.8 million through contributions from individual donors, community, and corporate donors. Those funds have helped support student activities involving science and history and reading and performing arts, as well as programs to educate students importantly on cultural awareness and inclusivity. It has come to my attention recently through conversations with several ASD board members that the ASD Board is reconsidering its relationship with the foundation. More specifically, the ASD Board may decide, in alignment with their new academic strategy, to no longer use the foundation as a fundraising organization for the district, of which said funds support many activities in the district centered on science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Many of these activities are organized by the foundation in conjunction with the elementary, middle, and high schools. The ASDF was surprised to receive the news, as many of us believe we are truly a transformative organization that has helped many students achieve their academic goals. Although the decision to separate from the foundation has not been formalized at an ASD Board meeting, the foundation felt compelled to respond to the ASD Board via a letter outlining the numerous achievements of the foundation and asking how we can better align ourselves with the ASD to support its new academic vision. Unfortunately, we have not received a response. So I am here today in person to pledge the foundation's unwavering commitment to supporting the ASD Board and the Allentown School District students. I would ask that the Board allow the foundation to assist you strategically moving forward, and I offer myself as a conduit to begin those discussions. And lastly, I just wanted to say congratulations on all that you've done for the students. I see it in the news. I see it on TV. I see it in the morning call. I went to Dodd Gay for the Playground, and I wanted to say thank you for that. I hope we can be somewhat of assistance to you with all the momentum moving forward. I welcome any questions, but if there are none, I thank you so much for your time tonight.
I hope I say this correctly, Denise Sokolowski? Sokolowski?
Good evening. My name is Denise Sokolowski. I'm an alumnus of the Allentown School District as well, graduating from Muhlenberg, Trexler, and Allen High School. I currently run a practice in Allentown, serve on the board of the Allentown School District Foundation, and am the chairperson of the High Notes Gala Committee, which incidentally raised a record amount of money this past year for the students in the Allentown School District. I champion the vision and mission of the Allentown School District Foundation and eagerly contribute my time and talent to raise funds to fulfill these goals for the Allentown School District students. A positive educational experience for the students and the opportunity for advancement is the lifeblood of a school district. When I went to college, the Allentown School District Foundation didn't exist. But having had to take out student loans, their scholarship program would have been greatly appreciated. The opportunities provided to the ASDF recipients for scholarships is priceless. Similarly, the value of engagement in the arts can create enthusiasm, pride, and positive outlets for students who need it now more than ever. Take it from someone who knows. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Joanne Jackson Bauer has two cards. She'll have three minutes.
I'm an old school board member. And before I get to the podium, I wanted to have a sheet for each one of you. And if anything is remaining, if you would be so kind to pass those out, I would appreciate it. Thank you. I'm Joanne Jackson Bauer. I served two terms on the Allentown School Board, very proudly because I love this district. I am a product of the Allentown School District. And we have a very robust alumni group at Deer of High School, where I graduated. Went to Midway Manor, which has had a bunch of changes, and to Harrison Morton, and I loved every day. I am a veteran educator in special education due to the fine quality of educators that I, particularly Dr. Thomas Persing. He was in Chester. I don't know if anybody here was in Chester, but he was a remarkable, he's still living, remarkable inspiration. I am not going to publicly address why I'm here, because this is such a high that I don't want to talk about the football practice field and bring this down in any way, because this is such a good field night. I have prepared a bunch of questions and I have put information there where I can be reached. I do represent Keith Grohl's article in the paper, started the consternation that led to me being here. And this all can be quelled. I think that the questions are very poignant, and I think that their answers will help the Eastside community understand what is going on with the practice fields and the various things that go along with that, which I don't want to get into any detail about that. I just want this beautiful high to keep going on in this room. I sat right there and I was telling Julie Ambrose that these are chairs from Charlie Vasagio from Air Products. They are at least 25 years old. Those chairs need to be replaced. The rug. The rug was here, too. So I come here with a very light heart. I'm happy to see all of you. Mr. Rosado's father was my principal at East Hills. I am still working. I'm an advocate for special needs students and I assist homeless. I took eight people into my home for a year and a half to get them back on their feet. So I was very excited to hear about all of these wonderful things that you're doing and your interaction with the kids. Just great. So continue on with your wonderful evening and thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for your service.
Melanie Christopher?
Melanie Christopher, Easton, Pennsylvania. I'm a teacher in the district for the past, the minister didn't start yet, for the past 16 years. I've spent time at the elementary schools and I'm now at Deer of High School as an English language teacher. A little bit of background about me. My grandparents were born and raised in Ponce, Puerto Rico. Four of my aunts and uncles were also born there. My mother and three of her siblings were born in New York. My grandmother, as a young girl, lost both her father and her mother before the age of five. So she was shipped back and forth between two grandmothers in Puerto Rico. One of those grandmothers, at one point, decided to move to Florida and bring my grandmother with her. My grandmother was supposed to be going into fifth grade, no, fourth grade, fourth grade. And because her English wasn't good enough, they put her in kindergarten, which was quite humiliating to her. She spent the year in kindergarten in Florida and then her grandmother and she moved back to Puerto Rico, where her grandmother enrolled her back in school, who then wanted to put her back an additional year rather than putting her in fourth grade that she had missed or in fifth grade where she should have been, because she had missed an entire year of school. And so that's where her schooling ended. She never stepped foot into another school. She told that story until the day she died, May 1st, 2011, at the age of 89. She is the reason I worked to receive my English language teaching certificate. That is my goal in teaching. I want to work with the English language students. It's more than a job. It's very personal to me. And I've been told that I shouldn't speak out about this issue because it could be detrimental. However, in staying quiet, I'm not being true to myself. I'm not being true to my students, and I'm not honoring my grandmother's memory. There are many students in the middle schools and high schools who do not yet have computers. All of our programs of study are online. They are digital. My understanding is, in all of the schools, the computers started being handed out with the AP students and worked their way down. According to CIS, for our schools, learning support students and ESOL students are the focus. And yet, the ESOL students, who are the most needy, according to CIS, are the ones who do not have their computers. We are coming up on the second round of Last Link's testing on Monday. STAR testing, the second round starts. We are coming up on Keystone testing. It is November. And I still have students who do not have computers. It's unfair to ask them to put their cell phones away when they are using their cell phones in class. It's unfair to expect them to use their cell phones in class. And it's inequitable that they don't have computers like their peers. Thank you.
Sean Kirbine?
Good evening, Sean Kirbine. I'm an elementary librarian at Jefferson Elementary School. I came tonight to invite the board to the, this is a really long name. I gotta find a shorter one. The Jefferson Elementary Library Books and Bowties Book Fair at Barnes &amp; Noble Elementary School. It's only that long. This is my fall. You're each receiving a flyer. This is my fall fundraiser to earn money for the Jefferson Elementary School Library. I am almost never not trying to fundraise for the library, but this is my fall one, because I decided to do something different a few years ago. We go to Barnes &amp; Noble. In this case, it's going to be at Saukham Valley, because the one in the Lehigh Valley Mall is under construction. So we had to move it. But I decided to do something different. We have students from the Muhlenberg Magical Memories Group. They dress up on Saturday for Saturday Storytime, and they come in and they talk to the kids and they read with them, and we have a grand old time. And Friday night is the gala. As I tell my students, this is a fancy name for a fancy party. Please dress up. If you can't dress up, maybe you could wear your Halloween costume. I'd love to see you guys in your Halloween costumes. Or if not, just come as you are, because I just want to see you. This is the third year that I have extended this invitation to the Board of Directors. I also want to, Jen, I sent you an email with the attachment. I would also like to invite anyone from the Administration Center to please come join us. We have a good time. If you want to read a book, I'll shove a book in your hands and you can read a book to someone or to all of them. But it's just, it's a community effort. I'm trying to get more community into it and invite you to come join the fun. You can even make a crown and decorate it and wear it around. And I have colored mustaches that you can wear, too. So we have a good old time. Thank you.
I have a question. They didn't tell me I'm not supposed to ask, but I'm gonna ask anyway. Did you just get this? What did you come up with this date?
With what?
For the 18th and the 17th.
Where did I come up with the dates?
Did you let us know? I mean, is this the first time that you're giving this to the district for us to attend?
Yes.
Okay, so tonight is the first time we got it?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much. But in the future?
But I did ask the last two years. I did invite you the last two years.
The other two, I missed them because of calendar. So I'm just saying, when you know that you're gonna do something or if it's gonna be around this time every year, this helps me. And that's my reason for stopping the bus and asking you this question.
Okay, no problem. I hope you come.
I'll wear a costume. I'll get, you know.
Are you gonna tell us what you'll be?
I'm not gonna tell you. I'll just show up.
Oh, you're just gonna show up?
And I read, too. Thank you. That's it.
Is there any old business to come before us tonight? Is there any new business? Then may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then that concludes the special meeting, and we should be ready to move into the committee meetings.
Should we take a break first? I'm sorry. You wanna take a break? Break. Yeah.
Yes, but you know it's not gonna be two minutes. We're gonna take a three-minute break.
So you have a place in Westchester?
Yeah. No, actually, we sold our townhouse. And
And. Parenting. Number of years ago. Sold their house. That daughter. Sister-in-law. That's where they lived, that they both had.
I can see if we got.
Two blocks from my daughter.
Actually, my plastic cover. They are.
So.
I'm the lawyer.
So I just want to tell you that.
Education Committee of the whole meeting to order. Still nothing. Testing, testing. Okay, I'm here.
Are you going first?
You wanna go first? What's wrong?
Yes.
Okay, there's a correction. I'm gonna back off. It's not gonna be Education Committee. It's gonna be Finance and it's gonna be done by. Mr. Palmer.
Thank you for that, Director Conover. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors. The School District for the City of Allentown for today, November ninth, twenty twenty-three. The Board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the Board on an agenda. And or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Comment cards must be received by the start of the meeting, which is now. We will not be receiving public cards once the meeting begins. A copy of the public comment policy is located on the table next to the comment cards. Per our Board's policy, any person may address the Board in accordance with the procedures and limitations of this policy, either on issues presented and resolutions being considered. Or on other matters affecting the administration, management, or operation of the district. Remar- remarks of a personal nature directed against any individual ruled out of order. If you choose to address the Board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the Board Secretary, Mr. Simonson. Keep raising. He has his hand raised. Thank you. Comment cards are located at the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record and kindly leave me your remarks to three minutes. Superintendent's remarks.
Good evening again. So well, it's kind of nighttime now. Good night, everyone. To the School Board Directors, to members of the public. I'm excited tonight. We have a short Finance Committee agenda. But before I say the highlights of that meeting, I'd like to call in our students who are here representing William Allen High School. They are here to perform in honor of Veterans Day. It's our William Allen High School Dance Academy. Under the leadership of Coach Dawn Blanco, so give a round of applause for William Allen High School.
On the class, William Allen High School Dance. On the direction of Coach Blanco. Gonna thank Ms. Singer for being here as well. I'm so proud to be the superintendent for Allentown School District. Let's give our students another round of applause. It was sensational. There's some precious jewels here in the Allentown School District with great gifts and talents and I'm so happy that we, as I said earlier, are making. A bigger investment in their success. So thank you, Mr. Palmer, for that. We want to let the students go home and do their homework. So tonight, our, we have a short finance agenda, come, agenda for finance. A budget update on allocations for each school will be presented tonight by Mr. Fazio. We will present a contract with Bloom Board, which will assist in creating a pipeline. To offer our staff certifications, uh, courses to, sorry, a little busy, excuse me. Courses for certification and we'll have software tracking system, a presentation, absolute. Software tracking system. Also, there will be a presentation for that this evening and some updates for our IT department. Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. At this time, we are taking public comments on agenda items only. Are there any, oh, no comment cards? Okay. So we have three action items this evening. We do want to kind of present all of them together. The first item is the school budget allocations. Thank you. That was certainly a tough act to follow and you're stuck with me. We are deep into the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget process. And one key ingredient in that process is the allocation of our resources to schools. Those are the funds that the principals have control over and are called building allocations. In Allentown, we use what's called a fair funding formula. Where we take into consideration. Different socioeconomic factors and distribute an equal amount of money. To schools based on those factors. We take into consideration, for example, the number of special ed students in the school, the number of gifted students in the school. The poverty level of the school. The grade level, the English language learners of the schools. And we put that in a formula that's presented before the Board and we allocate those resources. And we ask for your consideration to approve those so that they would be incorporated into the, into the budget process. We kept the, the allocation at this point in the process the same as last year. So there's level funding in, in total. But there's a difference in funding for each school based on, on those fa- factors in the formula. The, if I could just add, the, the budget process is the, the start of the process. But we, we did a, we did a very good job, the school, the Board. We were recently notified by Standard and Poor's that because of our financial performance last year. Our, our bond rating was increased and that's. And, and I believe that's been the first time in a while. But that's important for, for different considerations. It could affect us positively by millions of dollars. As we, and if we were to enter into the bond market. It reduces our, our issuance costs. We get a higher, a lower interest rate. So. Congratulations to everyone here for that. We just have to, we have to be cognizant of controlling our costs in the future. And remaining on that right path. And can you just, real quick, just express for everyone how important it is when budget season comes around? Critically important if. Mr. Lindman and I work closely with Dr. Burks and the rest of the administration. But, but candidly, if our budget last year approached about four hundred and fifty million dollars, a quarter of a, a half, nearly a half billion dollars. And if any Board member would like. A, a deeper education to any aspect of, of the budget. You, both of us are, are here to help. So just. Reach out to Dr. Burks and, and we'll, we'll be glad to go, go through any part of any part of the budget.
Were you going to?
What?
Oh, were you going to?
Oh, I was gonna ask a question, but were you? So you said that was for last year. Was, can you tell me or tell us? Because we know that in the district that we have plenty. We have positions that we haven't filled. So is that, how does that affect that, that number? Because what happens is after. Moving forward and after you guys are gone because you, you hit temporary. With, our goal is still to fill those positions. So how is that gonna be affected?
By not filling the positions last year, it had a positive effect. I mean, because we budgeted for those positions.
Okay.
And we didn't spend the money in some cases. In the future. You were still gonna budget for those positions and hopefully we'll spend the money. So.
So filling the positions is not gonna have a negative or a positive, negative or positive. That's what I wanted, right?
It should be a, a balanced budget.
Okay.
So that's the first agenda item. The second agenda item. Will, we'll address that.
Good evening. We bring forward an approval or ask for the Board's approval for a Bloom Board proposal agreement. And it's a proposal from Bloom Board to partner with the Allentown School District to create a paraprofessional-to-teacher pipeline. This proposal will assist and support our paraprofessional employees and their acquisition of higher education credits and teacher certification. This initiative will help the Allentown School District grow our own teachers. This will increase the amount of qualified and fully certified educators in the Allentown School District. It'll increase the diversity of our workforce and will decrease the amount of teacher vacancies. There is a chart there for the cost per student per year as far as the size of the cohorts that we put together.
Mr. Sein, can you just spound a little bit more of the cohort because the public is not looking at this document and for the record, just to give us a little bit more about Bloom Board?
Certainly. So we did send out an interest survey to our entire paraprofessional unit to gauge their interest in. Their level of education and what their aspirations were as far as continuing their education credits. The district would provide some financial support in an agreement that we've already had some tentative talks with our par union about. Where they would work with Bloom Board with the support of their staff in a cohort model. And the support of mentors within ASD and their principals with support to be able to work towards a bachelor's and a teaching cert. In exchange for years of service, the Allentown School District would pick up the, the bill for our par professionals to acquire those credits and the teacher credentials.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions?
Yes, I just think that's great. I think that that's an innovative idea to work and support our powers in their education. So we can fill those gaps. You know, there's a teacher shortage everywhere. And this is a great innovative way for us to think about how we can fill those gaps. A great job.
I would just echo what Ms. Noel Brown said. I was gonna say the same thing. We know we have a national teacher shortage and we're competing for the same talent across the board and. This is a wonderful way to, to, as you have in your memo, grow our own because these are folks that are already invested in, in our kids. So thank you for being proactive. Thinking outside the box.
So I, I have a question.
So, I, I have a question, another, um, I think this is a great idea, but at the same time, you, you may very well have powers whose goals are not to become a teacher. So, my question is, maybe I'm asking this question because I've been here a long time. Does this have anything to do with what we have committed ourselves in terms of addressing our paraprofessionals as it relates to their finances?
So, um, we also, I just wanted to speak to the educational aspect of this. Can you talk a little bit about the Hampton University program?
Um, so, in addition to our, uh, proposed partnership tonight, we do have a partnership with Hampton University Online where we already have, um, paraprofessionals that have signed up, uh, applied to, uh, Hampton University Online, uh, and started their classes and, and some have already received scholarships to pursue associates or, or bachelors, um, through that partnership. And I think you're also starting the conversation around the, the contractual pieces.
Yeah, but I want to be careful while I'm going into that piece. But what I'm really saying, I'm going to try to be is we know that our paraprofessionals have been in a situation that we've been trying to get them out of. And it has, it has nothing to do with just us personally. It's a history of what has been going on in the district. So, what I don't want to happen is for this wonderful opportunity to come up, but it may be very, we, paraprofessionals are not ready to go back to school. They don't want to do. Or is that going to say either you, are we, is this going to turn into saying, well, if you don't do this, then you're going to stay in the same spot that you're in? Are we going to, that's, that's what I'm, am I making sense to you?
Uh, yes, you are. Well, we want to share academically and then Mr. Fazio and, um, we'll weigh in a little bit and Attorney Sosanic. One, we want to support people in their career growth and development because we are in the learning business. So, we offer, we're offering opportunities. If you want to become the teacher, you can. Here are ways for us to support you. And then also, if you don't want to become a teacher, you can major in something else. And if you're between the age range that Hampton University has established, my great alma mater, um, between twenty-five and fifty, we will fund your education. They will fund, you make a commitment to the district, you have some college credits. The university has, will invest in you receiving a degree. It could be in business, it could be in whatever they're offering. So, that's one way to answer your question. But from a fiscal standpoint, because people need money and finances, we are going to open up the contract early for our paraprofessionals unit. And I didn't want to, I, we have members of our team that are on this so they can speak a little bit more eloquently about this than I where we are in that process. I don't know, Mr. Fazio, if you can address that, please.
We're just, uh, we've just, uh, started to cost out the cost of the paraprofessional contract salaries and benefits. We'll be, uh, we formed a committee. We're analyzing that, so probably within the next week or two, um, month or so, Jeff. We'll be, uh, sitting down in, and, um, the contract doesn't expire until twenty twenty-four. Um, but we're, uh, we're hoping to enter into it, what, what normally we call early bird discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Thank you. And the last item, the absolute, uh, computer trace?
So, actually, um, we're going to triple team you on this one. Um, we have Jose Rivera someplace out there. Um, and Carrie. Biano. Um, so, this is, uh, uh, some board man, some board members may remember this agenda item, um, because it was, uh, addressed or, uh, it was tabled actually about a year ago. And I'll ask, uh, I'll ask Carrie to address the, um, her company. And I think you may have a couple of slides or,
I do.
To explain it in, in a little bit more detail. Um, but then we'll talk a little bit about finances at the end.
Good evening, Dr. Burks, uh, distinguished members of the board and esteemed constituents of Allentown School District. I'm so pleased to be here. Um, as previously mentioned, we were on the agenda about a year ago. Um, Absolute has been in the school district and been a, um, an integral part of your IT asset management and an IT team for not as long as the chairs have been here, but just shy of about ten years. Um, but I, I just wanted to make sure that I was able to address some of the specific things about what Absolute has, brings to the table for the school district, uh, and for taxpayers. Um, can we go to the next slide?
Before she start, can I make a comment?
Oh, sure.
Please, just, I just, because I remember, um, what we talked about that year that it was tabled. What was, what was the concern was that the parents may very well have a concern in terms of the students having, um, devices on their systems, tracking devices on their systems. And that may have been a, an issue and we wanted to table.
Point of order, that, I think when, when we have discussion time, Ms. Conover, that's would be the time to, to revisit that.
Yeah, but the only reason why I did that and I, I received that was because you, you said that this was something that came out before. And, and if you're going to go through this whole slide and I'm going to sit through it, I want to make sure that you answer those questions. So, that was my reason.
I actually, I did, I, I was listening in on the last meeting, uh, virtually. Um, so, and I, and that is absolutely going to be part of this deck. I, I, I think since you brought it up, it's a great time to,
Absolutely.
To address it. Absolutely. That's what we say. Love that. So, only in the event that a parent says that a child is missing, will we actually be tracking that child? We are only doing it if there is a police report that is filed. There is a online console where a, uh, the administrator would upload a police report into the console. And at that point, we have a, a private investigations team that consists of sworn-in officers, ex NYPD, FBI agents, ex FBI agents. And once that process takes place, those folks take over that process. So, only in the instance where a child is deemed missing will we be tracking. We're not always polling and looking at every single move of every single person that runs on our software. I hope that addressed.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay. And can we hold all of our questions till the end as well?
I just wanted to make sure we were the best.
Just in case.
No, that was top of mind. So, thank you for bringing it up. I appreciate that. So, um, again, not as long as the chairs, but we've been in, uh, working with Absolute, uh, yeah, working with Allentown School District, um, for just shy of ten years. Uh, our primary claim to fame is the fact that we are embedded in the BIOS of every single Windows device on the planet. We're the only technology in the world that does this. Um, we are actually embedded in six hundred billion devices on the planet. You just have to buy the license and activate it. I wish they were all my customers. They're not. Um, we have twenty-one thousand customers in over fifty-one countries, uh, and we are based out of, uh, Vancouver, Canada. Uh, I will say we were, uh, just acquired by a private equity company, uh, back in July that specializes in cybersecurity. Uh, McAfee and Blue Jacket are some of the other companies that fall under that umbrella. So, we're super excited about that. We were delisted off the NASDAQ and now are a privately held company. I think that's great for us because that gives us a lot more money, uh, for R and D and, and enhancements to our product. Can you switch to the next slide? Perfect. So, state of the state, where do you, where does Allentown School District sit right now with us? Right now, you have about eighteen thousand five hundred licenses, uh, in total. Uh, you have a couple of different, uh, licensing paradigms. Um, what I would say about, one of the main reasons why we're here today, um, and we've been trying to get a enterprise license established for Allentown is because of the size of the population of devices that you actually have in place. Um, it would actually streamline things. So, what happens is when you guys do a device refresh, they buy five hundred devices, three hundred devices. Every time we do that, even with Absolute being sold on the box, that means you have all these scattered, uh, expiry dates of your licensing. So, it, it's a behemoth tax, task for your IT department to manage. Uh, and this would be a great way to sort of streamline how you guys manage all of your, um, devices. Next slide. Any questions before I, I'll pause? Okay. So, um, I know that we were kind of late to the party. I got asked to come to this meeting on Monday. Uh, and what we need to do in order to create this sort of enterprise license agreement for you, for you folks is we need to do what's called a buyback or we would apply a unused license credit towards this enterprise license agreement. So, because you purchased these device, these licenses already, we want to make sure that the school district is, is getting some credit against that value. So, all of your purchasing goes through CDW, which is a reseller. And this is the quote, it's a hundred and fifty-six thousand, sorry, my eyesight is terrible.
Eight.
Uh, thank you. Uh, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, annually to run this. And this includes covering sixteen thousand five hundred, uh, Chromebook devices and, uh, three thousand Windows devices. Questions? Sorry.
Uh, I'm going to interrupt him. The agenda item that you have before you is, uh, was replicated from the agenda. A year ago. So, the numbers you'll see or that you're looking at, I think is a hundred and eight thousand, a hundred and eight thousand, a hundred and eight thousand. Um, so about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, but what's important to note is that what Carrie was just talking about, um, the credit, uh, previously was about a hundred and,
Twenty thousand, I think it was.
So, so without the credit, without the credit, it would have been about a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars a year. The credit brought it down to a hundred and eight thousand. Where we are now is at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, at that top number, we don't know what that credit is. We'll know that credit.
So, the credit is coming from where? Because we purchased it already and we can use it? So, now we're going to get credit?
And apply it to the larger contract, which will cover the entire device population.
So, when did we purchase it?
All different, again, like I said, every time that there is a new device that's purchased, the software is actually on the box and added at the point of sale.
So, we purchased software already that had the licenses on it already?
To, your laptops, um, have the absolute license on the box. And it's great because the district is able to leverage, uh, capital, capex dollars for that purchase. It's a great way of sneaking in software on a capex expenditure. So, that's another reason why.
I understand it, but what I'm trying to understand is how do we sneak in, we, 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 do we have this already on our devices?
Yes, eighteen thousand devices.
This is.
But it's not being implemented.
But it's not activated. It's not activated. That's what I'm.
No, no, it's, they're activating. You have eighteen thousand active licenses that are currently in play right now.
But the devices, can you track the kids right now?
Only if you submit a police report on a specific child.
You're asking for something that we already have. You got to help me understand.
Sure. So, what we're trying to do is to consolidate your, and create an enterprise license agreement for the school district. What that does is it gives you a fixed amount every year for your entire swath of devices for the school district. You know what that is every time. It's not, you're not buying licenses at all different staggered dates. You get a five percent overage budget on your device, on your device population. Oftentimes, if you do do a device refresh, you'll be over that, let's say we, we contract for twenty thousand licenses in total. You have a five percent buffer that you can go over that without being penalized. So, that, that, it's just.
I can understand that part, but I need you to help me understand. This is what my question is. The last time we had the, the conversation last year, when it was tabled, the problem was that some folks had concerns about the students having tracking devices on their devices. And so, it's my understanding until we having this conversation now that there's however many laptops out there, but they don't have tracking devices on them. So, are you saying to me or to us, because this is our meeting, that, yeah, there's always been tracking devices on them. But now what we're trying to do is get a collective deal on having one license. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, but we're not, again, we're not, the tracking software has been active in the school district for almost ten years.
So, we didn't know that until tonight. At least I didn't.
Okay.
Okay. So, now you can finish with, yeah, that's a whole nother stuff, but.
So, and it does, it's, it's a lot more than just a tracking and tracing, um, mechanism. It is also to help for, with asset management and tracking, right? We also, you have a question?
No, 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 no. I understand that part because I, I'm not going to say anything else. I'm going to listen.
I want, just for clarity, because the way it was presented to us, to me and to the board, I'm sorry, Mr. Palmer, is it okay if I? Um, that the new Chromebooks that we've purchased do not have a tracking system. Prior a few years ago, when we first, um, purchased, maybe three or four years ago, those particular devices did have tracking device systems in them. And this time last year, when it was presented to the board, the school board of directors, they said, we don't want to buy these tracking systems. And so, the district said, okay. We ta, it was tabled and that we have some devices that may have some tracking device and systems in previous years because we still have them, you know, as part of our inventory. But some of the newer devices do not have this as part of, of the system in the, um, like our newer Chromebooks. That's what I was told.
So, as far as I can tell, there have been, the recent orders that have come through did have Absolute included on the bill of materials. So, they, the licenses are there.
I'm not going to say anything else. I'm going to listen, but I will tell you, I'm not confused. I had no idea that there was any tracking devices on any of the devices that we had. Because the first devices that we got, we got them from donations and all kinds of places because we were part of the digital divide. That was during COVID. And so, tonight, I'm finding out with my other board members that there's tracking devices already on the systems that our students have in their hands. Now, I'm not going to pretend that I don't know that, but that's the diff, I'm going to wait for the presentation and then we're going to keep going with life as usual, but I'm not confused.
Sure. No, I, I didn't think that at all.
And, and that's why I wanted to clarify because what was presented to me, it was that these recent computers did not have tracking device systems. Hence, when I first started last year, it was presented to the board and the board said, we didn't want to do that. So, we're learning tonight that every single device, I just want to make sure I'm clear about this, that we have in this inventory to date has a tracking device system.
I don't know if it's every single device. It's eighteen thousand devices for sure. The, the number that I had.
That must mean necessarily, we may not have those eighteen devices in our inventory right now because not every one of, we have sixteen thousand seven hundred something students, depends on the day, and that we not each, not every child has.
One to one.
Yes.
Yeah, someone just came and gave a whole thing.
Yes, yes, so.
So, these, these tracking devices that are in these computers, if I said to you right now, my daughter never came home from school tonight, you could track her laptop right now and find out where she was?
Yes. As, as long as you put a police report in, and I will tell you, we, we do a ton of work it with K twelve, in K twelve. And, and there is, there have been instances where there's been an Amber Alert at a school or a child in distress. And they needed to track the child, the kid ran away. And the first thing they do is they grab their Chromebook and they go to an internet cafe. Soon as they log in or, or connect to wifi, we can see within a few meters where that child is located in that instance, only if you need for us to do that. We're not actively tracking every single.
Right. And I understand that that's not the main objective with having these, um, tracking devices. I, I get that. But at the end of the day, um, if a child goes missing and we happen to be able to find that missing child based on them having their Chromebook with them, I'm not opposed to that happy ending.
That, that is actually a use case that has happened several times in several of our school districts.
Mr. Palmer?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. After Ms. Brown Noel, can Ms., uh, Pollak, talk a little bit about history in these tracking devices?
Yeah. So, we, we know that we're missing quite a few, um, devices right now. And you're saying that eighteen thousand have them. If we can give you the numbers that are attached to the devices that are missing, can you tell us where those devices are?
Absolutely. One hundred percent.
So, this whole.
They are, if those devices have Absolute activated on the box, as soon as that device is, connects to a wifi, we can see where that device is within a few meters. I, I'll give you a, a great use case. We had a student during COVID, went down, I was on a, I was on a call with a customer, Mount Vernon City School District in New York. They were, um, they're like, we have a device missing and we, and it, it's not popping, populating in our console. And while we were on a call, they're like, oh, God, we just got a, an alert saying that this device just showed up in Florida. We were able, uh, in real time, we were able to send an end user message to that device saying, hi, Joey, hope you're having fun in Disney World, but you're out of compliance. You're not supposed to have your school issued laptop out of state. We're freezing your device. Please return it when you get back to the IT department and we'll reactivate it for you. That's, that's just one of a myriad of different use cases. Um, lost or stolen devices, this is one of my favorites. So, Absolute, I mentioned our, uh, you know, our investigations team. We have the ability to actually, if we cannot find a device, let's say you do the police report, you put it in, after sixty days. Let's say you do the police report, you put it in, after sixty days, if we cannot find it, we will reimburse the school district. Up to one thousand dollars for every device that we cannot recover, okay? And that's, that goes based on the depreciation lifecycle, so for example, if it's, you know, one year in, it's a thousand dollars. And then every year it decreases, depending on where that, how old that device is, the value, for Chromebooks, it's two hundred and fifty dollars, same thing. So I, I mean. Sorry, go ahead, we're so excited about this.
But let's talk, board, let's talk.
Let's talk.
Who dropped the ball?
I have a few questions, actually.
Who dropped the ball? Because there are these Chromebooks out there, the lady came, the teacher came tonight. Had a full discussion about getting ready for keystones, all the stuff, and the kids don't have devices. Like Ms. Conover, I was under the impression that they did not have any tracking system on them, and the kids are, you know, keeping them, taking them at home. We can't get them, we ordered laptop, we're waiting for them to come now. But now I'm finding out that we can track it, and actually, not only that, if we don't recover it, we could actually get reimbursed for it. So we can get more laptops, so what happened here? How did this ball get dropped that we did not know this, and we're kinda out of like millions of dollars right now?
Let, let me ask one other question, I, I was unsure when you said. You can track an individual currently when there's a police report.
Correct.
In the absence of a police report, can we do this?
That was my question.
So if you have a swath of devices that, let's say, have gone dark, you can actually ping or create a report. And identify the devices that have not called in, and then you can see if they're actually calling in, and it's, it's very benign. It's, we're not seeing any personal information, there's no camera on the device, we're not listening. I know everybody thinks everybody's listening, but we're not listening, we don't store any data, but you can actually track where that device is located by geolocation.
Okay, so without a police report, so the police report comes into play when?
For our investigations, to get the service guarantee, which is the, the light, the reimbursement for a device that have gone lost and stolen. So Windows, it's up to a thousand, depending on where it sits in the depreciation lifecycle, and when, and Google Chromebooks are two hundred and fifty dollars.
So if we wanna make a claim for dollars, then we need, we need a police report. But we don't need a, a police report when we just want to locate where it is, whether it be in Florida or next door.
Yeah, and you can do it in a very mild mannered way, obviously, you're not gonna fill out a police report for every single device, right? You may wanna, you know, send an end user message on the device, because again, we're embedded in the BIOS, un, undeletable. You can actually send an individual message to that student's device saying, we know that your device is pinging in this place, like bring it, return it. We know you have the device, we've had devices pinging over someone's house, kinda like Find My iPhone. Where you can see exactly where the device is located, as long as it's got wifi connection, we're gonna see it, you're gonna see exactly where that device is located.
Okay, so I have two, two things, so we can't get any money back unless we have a police report.
Correct.
So I, I would like, I would like to add something to this.
Can you give one moment, Jose?
And my other question is, how far is your reach? Is it just the US contiguous state?
Wherever the wife is.
New York City DOE is one of my accounts, they have eighty one thousand active licenses. And they have devices that, that pinged in like forty different countries.
Okay.
I mean, that's, you know, you're talking about like major data breaches, right? If that's, if that is a Windows device that's popping up in an Ampfarc country, I mean, that is crazy, that, you know, student data privacy. I mean, again, that's a really big thing too, I mean, student, teachers, oftentimes, they're on the Windows devices, they have an IEP that's sitting on their desktop. If God forbid, that device gets breached, and, and by the way, seventy percent of data breaches occur at the endpoint. And education is ripe for the picking for bad actors. So I'm not saying that to scare you guys, I'm just saying it because it's, it's, it's the world that we live in. They say the next world war is gonna be a cyber war, and that's, that's the reality that we're in. So protecting that, that data, so for example, if that IEP is sitting on a teacher's device, you have the ability to delete that. At the file level as an admin, and again, this is all only on an admin level, right? Um, your IT, you know, Jose and Ronald and folks, right? You can actually delete at the file level if necessary. If, it also can detect if there's a social security number or a credit card. It can actually see the first four digits of the number, not the last four, right? And we don't store any data in absolute, we can only see it in an obfuscated view. And you can actually, again, remediate from the admin console remotely. And just delete the file, freeze the device, lock the device, whatever your flavor. That was a lot, right? It's really, I, 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 I get so excited about it, cuz I feel like my, you know, you know, yeah, I'm a software salesperson, but the technology really helps people. And it's, it's helped a lot of people, so we're super, you know, I'll pause.
Ms. Pollak?
Sure, real quick, I just wanted to add that in the past, the Office of Student Services has worked with IT to locate runaways. So we've had some instances where we've been able to help families, because we've been able to, to ping where they're at. I did not do it personally, but again, we work together with the IT department to do that.
Thank you for that.
So you're saying IT knew we could already?
Certainly, this happened prior to the conversation a year ago when this was tabled.
That was unsolicited, by the way, so thank you for that.
Uh, Jose, are you still with us?
May I just ask, can he provide some clarifying information for us?
Yeah, I'd love for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I'm still here, I, I just wanna add that, uh, every time we purchase a device, it comes with a, a version of the absolute. License, uh, as Carrie showed in, in her presentation, there are different flavors of this. And the, the version that we get, it's the sort of, call it the entry level. That that version does not provide some of these features that she has presented. Uh, in order for us to go ahead and, and have that available on, on, on all devices. We will have to just consolidate the licenses on, onto a, a type of license that would allow us to do things like. Like, like, like she said, you know, uh, and take advantage of the, uh, device that gets lost or stolen. Of the refund or, or the, I guess, the buyback, if, 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 if they don't find it currently, uh, under the license that we get. It, it's not, it, it's not included.
Are, are you saying, right, I think the question is, and I think that's what we're, we're struggling as a district. Right now, right now, based upon the licenses that we have in place, on the eighteen thousand units. Can we do these searches?
Yes, so can you go back a couple of slides, cuz I have the license inside, one more.
So.
This one, right here, okay, so the DDS PRME, those all have resilience and can be tracked. The seventeen hundred devices, another eight thousand, the Chrome with the premium, those also. So about, about ten thousand of your devices are currently covered with the service guarantee. Seventy nine hundred of them are not, cuz they were sold a different license type. That's another rationale for us consolidating and getting everything under one umbrella on an enterprise license agreement.
So, so out of the eighteen thousand, ten thousand do have the tracking. And eight thousand or seven thousand?
They all have the tracking, all eighteen thousand have the tracking, just the ten thousand have the service guarantee.
I, I see.
Investigations and the reimbursement.
Okay, so we, we have what I call the service guarantee, we have so to speak, insurance on sixty percent of the units. On the balance, we do not.
Correct.
But we can.
But we have tracking on all of them.
All eighteen thousand plus, correct. The geolocation, the geo fencing, that's another cool, cool thing, you can create a geo fence over a campus if you have a loner device. Um, a lot of school districts or buildings might have loner devices, if a student leaves a, a device at home, you can actually create a perimeter around the campus. So that if that device steps outside of that perimeter, the admin will get an alert, hey, loner device stepped outside of boundaries. Please, and then you could freeze it, lock it down, send a message to the student, you're not, you're out of compliance, please bring the device back into the school, into the building.
So if we were not to upgrade right now, if we were not to act on that. We still would have tracking on all of our devices. But we would not have the benefit of the. Service guarantee feature, that, that's what we would be buying by virtue of this action. And, and having one license, one enterprise license.
So that's conflicting with what Jose just said, though.
I agree.
So he just said it's basically a trial version is what we have, and we can't do that on all of our devices.
Let, let, let me, probably I, I didn't explain it correctly, but the, the version of the license that we get. Is the, what we call the entry level version, um, for each device, and I believe it's like seven dollars and ninety eight cents for like three years of service. So they, so there's different variations or versions of, of their, their service. And my understanding is that the version that we have is that one that is just sort of like the entry level.
But you said all of these are on the BIOS, which is how your computer runs, so you can't have our computer running without this on there already.
So we're embedded in the BIOS of twenty eight different manufacturers, Dell, HP, Panasonic, Lenovo, doesn't matter. For any Windows device, it's already in there, it's baked in, you just have to buy the license to activate it.
And, and, uh, the, let, let me clarify that, so for clarity, and that's on Windows devices. Uh, it's not in the BIOS of the Chrome devices that, uh, we have most of them for, for students.
So that might be where the discrepancy, so what do we do with our Chrome, our Chrome devices don't have tracking?
They do have tracking, there's an agent that is bought for those licenses, and we are seamlessly woven into the Google admin console. So it's, it's very, very tightly woven in, you can track pretty similarly to our Windows devices that are embedded, cuz there's no software on Chromebooks.
And we have that capability now?
Yes, on eighteen thousand devices.
Which would include our Chromebooks versus our window based, uh, units.
Correct, so the first two line items up there are Windows and anything with CHR at the end is a Chromebook. So the, 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 the lion's share of the licenses are for Chromebook.
That's about sixteen thousand Chromebooks.
Thanks, you're much better at math than I am, thank you for that. I'm glad to be in a room with educators.
Mr. Palmer, right, so I just need for basic clarity for the board, and of course, for the public. So this eighteen thousand, if someone, if two hundred of them went out of the school district and the entry level version. Are we going to be able to get, find, track those Chromebooks? And basically, yes, okay, now, this entry level, so if it's seven dollars, whatever it is. The next level gets us the thousand dollars guarantee.
You're correct.
To get things back, okay, so tonight, your presentation, just succinctly, okay, one sentence. You're presenting that us to buy this additional insurance, so that all eighteen thousand plus that we have. Something happens, it goes over to Namibia, we can get it back, and then you'll be able to give us this thousand dollars and all that. We can call the FBI and all that kinda stuff, if kids are in distress, is that what you're saying to us tonight?
Yes, we have, if we cannot find a device after sixty days, and we have a ninety percent return rate. When our investigations team gets involved, we will then re, enact the reimbursement. For the, for any lost or stolen device that we cannot locate.
So you locate it in Namibia, okay, and then what?
That's a great question, I don't know that we have folks that are like feet on the street to get it back, but, um. That's a great question, I don't know what happens in that instance, I don't know, hopefully you won't have a lot in Namibia.
Yeah, but do you, do you have any statistics showing, because, uh, basically, what you're buying with the service guarantee is the payback. The question is, is it worth the cost of the payback? Do you have like statistics to show from an end user to do that? But because if we do have the tracking capability, I would probably guess that in a large percentage of the cases. You'll know where the unit is, and you'll be able to retrieve it without making a police report or an insurance claim. So I, I think the administration should really research that or get some statistics from you. On the efficacy of the service guarantee from a monetary perspective.
Yeah, we, I can certainly do that, and, and you bring up a great point, that's what would happen in another country, we would, we would contact local authorities there. To help to retrieve that device, so we have had those instances, we would reach out to those folks. There's one other point that I, I think I would be remiss if I didn't bring it up. We are part of the cyber catalyst, a cohort for cyber catalyst. What that means is if you guys have, and I'm sure you do, have cyber insurance, just generally speaking. You also can qualify with our resilience license to get a discount off of your cyber insurance for the district. So that's another, um, positive aspect of our resilience license with the service guarantee. We also do on our resilience license persist other security applications. So if you have anti malware, antivirus, VPN, if those devices, if, if a software update should go. Out for that specific device or to a swath of devices, we can actually, if something gets broken along the way. We not only will reinstall ourselves, but we will reinstall those other security applications to make sure that you have that specific device protected to the max. So that's another feature as well with the resilience licensing. And I know this was a lot to, to bring up, and I'd be happy to, you know, again, get you some statistics on the efficacy of our service guarantee. And also maybe highlight some of the differences between our control licenses and our resilience licenses. And then you guys can tell me which you think would be best for the school district.
Just for clarification, for me, I don't know if anybody else needs this clarification, but, um. We already have the eighteen thousand plus that have the tracking. So we can track where our missing computers are.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So then why haven't, why, why haven't we done?
We went there already, Jen.
The administration is gonna have to investigate this.
Yes, cuz that was not what was presented to the superintendent.
I, I need to be honest, even the way that this is written does not state any of that, it states to actually put the tracking coverage on the devices. So this entire thing, I don't know, like, we're not even technically voting for the right thing at this point.
That's, that's correct.
What do we even do with this now?
I would suggest that the administration, um, investigate this further and then, um, remake a new recommendation.
Yeah, I hate to cut it off, but we can't vote on this.
Yeah, I agree.
I would like to offer up.
Do we have, I'm, I'm sorry, Jap, do we have to make a motion now then to have this removed from the agenda tonight?
No, we just don't have to act on it.
Okay.
Or we're, we're not gonna vote, we're not gonna move it on for action. Normally, what we do here is if something is ripe for action, we'll take a motion to move it on, we just won't move it on.
I mean, it's, it's nothing against you, I just, there's no way for us to be able to vote on that.
Yeah, uh, the administration, actually, Dr. Burke's on behalf of the administration can just withdraw the recommendation at this point in time. And that will bring it back once we get this appropriately vetted.
Withdraw this, even the money isn't correct on here, so.
Thank you. May I ask the, um, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, yes, okay, may I ask the board, um, to give me an opportunity to come back to the next board meeting? To potentially get on the agenda, and I would be happy to, you know, come in separately and meet with whomever from the IT staff and your administration to. Present both options, so you guys can be fully aware of what the capabilities of our technology can bring to the Allentown School District.
I, I think the, uh, I think the administration will have to initially vet that, and they may wanna talk to you first. Before they bring it before the board, because we need to, uh. I think many of us were under a misapprehension in terms of the status, including, I think, the superintendent. The status of this issue, so we need to sort through that first, nothing to do with you.
Sure.
Okay.
I will say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Was there, cuz that was the last item, so. We're bringing the dancers back.
So, so are we doing?
That was the best line. That was the best line. You worked on that one.
You had a lot of time. The, the last item is just that, um, it is part of the agenda next, next week. We'll, uh, we'll have our financial reports.
Thank you.
Was there something?
I just want to be clear, there was a request that the administration, so for the record. That the administration is requesting that we remove this item from the finance agenda until we can engage in more additional research and come back to the school board of directors with fully, a full understanding of how this process works. The number of devices and what has, I'm going to add this on and what has been done historically to keep track of these devices. And if we had this capability, I have a question as to what, why have we not executed on this capability? So I'd like to get some trend data on even and of the woman who was here. Since, since we've had this relationship for such a long time, then she should have some data as to how many devices were lost within the Allentown School District. How many have you helped us track throughout this time period as well with ten years, five years, or whatever it was in this level of relationship?
Okay, I appreciate that. Accepted. And thank you for explaining that to us as well. We appreciate that. Um, since that was. So we have two other action items that need to be moved forward to the next regular board meeting on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Uh, we have had a discussion, but any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, these items move forward to the next board meeting. At this time, we are taking public comment for non-agenda items. Are there any?
Yes, Dan Basket.
Okay, uh, once you up to the podium, just state your name, address for the record.
Dan Basket, five twenty-three, five twenty-five North Seventh Street, Allentown. Uh, as I told, um, board person Palmer, I just wanted to take a moment and say, talk about the good work that the Allentown School District students have been doing during the election process. Um, I serve as judge of elections at the district eighteen-two out on App Street at Saint Timothy's Church. Uh, we've had some ASD students for the last two years. But this particular year, this past Tuesday, we had two students from building twenty-one. I told Mr. Rosado about it before the students were presented to, to be added to the boards. He said they were very excited when they got back to school on Wednesday. They talked about it all day. What I wanted to say is that I don't know how the process started. Mr. Palmer told me he was somewhat involved in the process first started. But the students, I want to say are well trained. This year, the students actually had ASD T-shirts with poll worker on the back, which they proudly wore. The students were only expected by the county board of elections to be there from eight thirty to four thirty. These students actually showed up at six AM to help us set up for the polls to open at seven o'clock. But not only that, they stayed all day till the polls closed at eight and, and, and they helped us tear down the entire process so that we could go then turn in the results. I want to say that during the course of the day, which is a very long day. You know, the average age of our voting population in that area is about fifty plus years old. Uh, I think the voting population probably everywhere is probably close to fifty plus years old. However, the voters coming in, they were so excited to see these young people working at the polls. They received complimentary comments all day long. And people were just so excited to see, they were so excited to see young people involved in the, in the, in the entire process. Learning how it works. And I want to say that the students were very courteous and there's lots of situations that come up during the course of the day and they handled them all perfectly. Um, some of them are difficult, um, and they rely on the judge, which is my role to make sure that everybody gets a chance to vote and everything works out really well. So I just wanted to compliment, um, the students and compliment the district. I think it's a great program. The students were very enthusiastic. The public loved it. And I think that, um, that they learned a lot. They said they were both seniors um, at building twenty-one. Um, Tristan and Leila, don't want to give their last names, but Tristan and Leila, uh, principal, um, Rosado knows who they are. And like he said, and like I said, they did a great job and throughout the course of the day, they received many compliments from the voters and it was very exciting to see. So I just want to say great job by the school district in terms of what the students are actually learning on a whole different level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other cards? Alright, thank you. Um, is there any old business coming for the board? Any new business? Have a motion to adjourn.
So move second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order the education committee of the whole of the board of directors of the school district of the city of Allentown for today, November ninth. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda items and or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comment is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. Of course, you know, comment cards are going to be received by the start of the meeting. And they are on the back table. And you can hand them to Mrs. Ramos or Dr. Simmons.
Mrs. Simmons.
I'm going to move right along. Um, Dr. Burks, do you have any comments at this time?
Uh, yes, thank you. Ms. Conover, good evening, everyone. Uh, one, I just wanted to remind the school board directors, and I hope this is okay, Madam President, if you could just say your names in the microphone when you present motions, so she gets a message in the head. If you just say if you said aye or second, if you just say your name for the record, that would be helpful.
Like, say, please, the Conover, aye?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, just. When you make the motion or if you second the motion, it'll be helpful if you just said your names. Yes, thank you. So thank you, Ms. Conover. Tonight on the education agenda, we're very excited to present contracts that will set the date for commencement. Now, students, school's still in session, so you have to get to the end of the year. But we will have commencement exercises for Deer of as well as William Allen High School at the PPL Center. And, uh, for building twenty-one at the symphony. So we, those contracts are presented for consideration, uh, for the school board of directors. You will hear an update on how we plan to update the Pennsylvania Seal of Bili literacy. We are excited about this effort uh, to honor the culture and heritage of our many, many lang, uh, English language learners throughout the district. Uh, we will also present, and these opportunities will be offered to all of our students throughout the district, even our students who attend our virtual programming. Uh, Ms. Pollock will also present the seven mindsets and social emotional curriculum for students in grade six to eight. This will help to dress up students' social emotional wellness and their mental health needs at those grade levels. And Mr. Pasquale and the Allentown Police Department are here to present the memorandum of understanding between the two, and to, between both organizations. And, and, and an effort to create a safe and secure environment for all members of our learning community. Thank you, Ms. Conover.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. At this time, we're only taking public comments on agenda items. Do we have any? Thank you very much. We have five agenda items this evening. First item is two thousand twenty-four commencement exercise, which will be presented by Mrs. Ramos.
Thank you. As Dr. Burks mentioned in her remarks, we're excited to be coming to you a little earlier this year. Last year, we came forward in January. This year, we're coming forward, uh, November. We're requesting the board's approval, um, to confirm our commencement exercises for William Allen High School on Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM at the PPL Center. For Deer of High School on Tuesday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM at the PPL Center. And for building twenty-one, Allentown, Wednesday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-four at six PM. The estimated cost for Allen and Deer of is approximately twenty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-four dollars. And building twenty-one's estimate is approximately two thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. And we have accounted for those costs in our budget. So we're respectfully requesting your approval for these agreements and to confirm our commencement dates and start the advertising and, um, sharing of that with our families. Do you have any questions?
I do. Uh, so the, um, that, that number that we're paying, what is that covering? Is that covering security? Or are we getting something for free?
Um, so at PPL Center, we do not pay rent. Um, the rent would have been, uh, eighteen thousand dollars. That is not an expense that we're charged.
Okay.
They do have security staff included, so their staffing, their event staff, their security staff, there's technology fees in there. And, um, I can provide a lot more detail, but there's the housekeeping and, and all of the event staff.
So they are giving us something.
They are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions. Are there any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, may I have a motion to move these plans forward to the regular?
Mrs. Wilt makes the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ready. Um, all in favor?
Three seconds.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye? Are there any that, I'm ready to go to bed. Are there any, any opposed? I'm sorry, I'm just being too honest. Okay, so this, um, item moves to the next, um, regular board meeting, which is on the sixteenth of November.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Smith come forward and she's here, she's ready. And she's going to send action item. It's benchmark advanced materials.
Good evening, board. Tonight, we're requesting your approval to purchase more benchmark advanced materials. This is our core elementary reading program. Um, we're asking for some more kindergarten kits. We're asking for some English learner supplies as well as some intervention materials. Since we did our original order, our enrollment has increased. And so we're at the point where we need to purchase some more materials at a cost of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and fifty cents.
Are there any questions?
No.
I, I got one. So I see we're using S R funds for this.
This is part of our learning loss, the twenty percent of S R three learning loss funds.
Are we like over purchasing? So we don't need to come back here just in case? Um, especially given it's this time of the year.
We did not over, we did not add cushion this order. This is what is needed now.
Okay, uh, so you may need to come back here again?
Possibly, yes.
No further discussion? May I have a motion?
Mrs. Wilt.
Mrs. Wilt may have a second.
Second.
Dr. Santana.
All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any that oppose? Hearing, seeing none, this moves on to our next regular board meeting, which will be on the sixteenth of November.
Thank you.
Thank you. The third item is Pennsylvania Seal by, by, by what? By literacy? By Anna Saint Anna Saints de la Pino. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's really a pleasure to be here and an honor, uh, and bringing good news. And the good news is that, uh, the seal of bili literacy is an add-on to the diplomas of children who actually can maintain proficiency in more than one language. And for that, really, what we're doing is honoring our students' linguistic diversity and linguistic value. Especially can you change the the slide, please? Okay. Uh, especially now when we are living in a society where we need to value not only the linguistic like diversity of our students, but also their ability to be part of a global economy and be part of a global vision for the world. I am going to go over, uh, giving you some overview for, uh, the ones that have never heard about the seal of bili literacy. So we will be looking at how our mission and vision and values in Allentown School District really match the whole idea of honoring our students' linguistic diversity. So yes, we have our mission and our vision that is really, uh, you know, very much looking at how do we grow these children and young, uh, and youngsters in a way that they are going to be part of our community and also part of the future of Allentown. The investment of education and investment in maintaining uh, their identity and their linguistic identity is always an asset. It's an asset for our community. So definitely the values that we see here of, uh, strengthening their partnerships and promoting cultural, cultural responsiveness is really very much what we're looking for when we really want these students to have the ability and to have the opportunity to maintain their native languages as well as learning English and for the students who are native speakers of English to acquire a second language to be able to function, you know, in society using that as a strength. Our district is diverse and when we looked at how many English learners do we have? And how many students are enrolled in our uh, high school word languages courses, we can see that right there, we have around more than six, six thousand students. Besides that, eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-three families in Allentown or students who live in families that are very diverse, speak another language and maintain that language as part of their communication at home. So if we would like to honor that, if we would like to use that as an asset. We really need to give these students the opportunity to have that seal of bili literacy. We are going to be joining twenty other districts in Pennsylvania who already offered the seal of bili literacy as part of their high school diploma. So as you see there, we have many districts and charter schools that already are offering the seal of bili literacy. The seal of bili literacy also is going to be, uh, really an opportunity for these students to look at different universities and colleges that accept that seal of bili literacy as a stepping stone to develop their languages or give credit to some of their proficiency in the different languages that they have. So in Pennsylvania, we have Indiana University of Pennsylvania and the University of Pittsburgh at Greensburg. Uh, there are more universities that looking at the numbers of the number of districts and charter schools that are offering this seal of bili literacy are also joining the group of universities who are recognizing that as a very positive thing to have. In Pennsylvania, the seal of bili literacy really is looking at not only the verbal ability, but also how these children really will graduate or these young adults will graduate, uh, by literate. That means that they need to not only speak the language, but also read and write the language. And definitely, if you place that seal of bili literacy in their diplomas, it's going to mean a lot not only for the children, but also for us as a district to be able to show how our values as a district really is honoring the language and is supporting our students to become more bicultural, bili literate and definitely to be productive members of society using those skills. In Pennsylvania, we have defined the seal of bili literacy, recognizing that we have strong word language programs in our districts and also that we will be looking at offering dual language programs in our district or in Pennsylvania around, uh, all of these areas where you have that richness in diversity. Definitely it affirms the value of culture and linguistic diversity, but at the same time, it provides employers the, uh, opportunity to look at this uh, future, the future of Allentown from the perspective of that global uh, engagement and global economy that we need to have in our city. Uh, universities also are looking at it as a way to really encourage more language development at the university. as a way to really encourage more language development at the university size, because there has been, you know, a time when we used to have uh many different languages offer at the university level, but lately, we have seen that that is not really something that is uh part of their vision. It's coming back, which is very good, because now we have that Seal of Bilitracy that is going to push universities to look at these new candidates from that perspective. One of the things that when you really read about the Seal of Bilitracy, it also recognizes the communities that we have here from the perspective of their language identity. There's nothing that really helps families to be part of a district when they see their language is used in an academic setting. If you see that your language that you brought here to the table is now used to teach children that language or courses in that language, that gives pride. That gives these families the idea that I am bringing something to the table that is of value. So this is why we really have to applaud our state that finally, after you know, many years that we have the Seal of Bilitracy in other states, then Pennsylvania joined that group of uh many states that had the Seal of Bilitracy. Actually, there are forty-nine states. Uh, the only state that does not have the Seal of Bilitracy is uh South Dakota. So uh but forty-nine states really provide that uh, you know, opportunity for our students to be proud of the languages that they have developed through their education. In Allentown, we had a a group of professionals, teachers uh and some administrators who supported the idea of looking into developing this pathway, so we will have uh really the opportunity to see that on our students' diploma. I applaud the team that really uh was very persistent and continued to work since January twenty twenty-three at reaching now the Seal of Bilitracy. One person that was very motivated and was almost the engine to push this forward was is here with us, Mark. Uh, Mark uh is uh one of our um uh English Language Development uh Supervisors of Instruction that is very much embedded and really pushes forward to see more word languages in our district. This is so important for us to see that Allentown is really there in the cutting edge of really having innovative ways to teach word language to really pushing these families to feel proud of the languages that they bring to the table. So, yes, now after starting in January twenty twenty-three, also Lisa uh was part of that group, uh, we uh now have the Seal of Bilitracy as her um conversations with the Department of Education. There are, there is criteria now that these children, these children need to meet. So it is not just the fact that you can speak two languages, you, we need to have proof that your proficiency is there. So part of the team effort was really to move forward, looking at what the state is looking at from the perspective of criteria. So we really would like our students to demonstrate their abilities, so that's why we have a plan. Definitely, there are options that they uh, you know, have to show us uh if they have really developed that proficiency in uh not only listening and speaking, but also in reading and writing. So there are, if you meet one of those three options that you see there, you will be considered proficient in English. There, that is the proficiency criteria. So for our students who are English learners, if they uh exited our E L L program or if they show that they have four point five score in the WIDA assessment, they are, they already have one part done. They got that English proficiency under their belt, but there's also others, other ways to assess that. And it's by using assessment that assesses language proficiency in Spanish, and we have actual uh and the uh Apple test that is also, that could be used in order to uh give these students the chance to really show their English language proficiency. For the students who are English speakers, we also have a way to really show us proficiency in the word language. So whether it is German, whether if it is Spanish that they have been taken, then we are going to provide them or we're going to have a test for them where they can show us their abilities to read and write in the word language of their preference. And uh we also open this to improving the way that we uh teach word languages in our middle school and high school, so we will have more candidates to be able to have that Seal of Bilitracy. So this is pushing Allentown School District really to look at word languages uh as a way to really improve the education of all children here in Allentown. One very important piece is actual supporting this, this uh issue or this initiative with uh offering, you know, tests that are in more than a hundred languages. So if we have students who are fluent in a a language that we uh, you know, are not very familiar with, like I just read that we have students from Congo that are coming to our district. They speak French and Congolese. We also have a family of five that speaks Swahili, that they just moved into our district. So they have children at the high school level, middle school level, and kindergarten. So we have five children in that family that if they really, you know, we can actually get them through our system and they maintain their language, their word, their, their own language, we will be able to actually assess, because we have all of these different languages that we can use these assessments. So where are we now? So now that we already have the Department of Education looking at us from the perspective that we have gone through that process of developing criteria, of going through the steps that they require us to have. So now we are in the process of working at the next level. This year, my team is going to be really busy trying to uh really look at what students are maintaining their first language or have very good levels of language development in other word languages. So we ca- we are finding the candidates that we will be able to present later on with the Seal of Bilitracy. And we really are working hard with the team in looking at how we're going to monitor that progress, identifying the students, and then at the end finalize uh in June, offering a diploma with the Seal of Bilitracy. So we are very excited. We have this is uh an innovation for us here in Allentown School District. This is giving value to our word language teachers that work very hard to really get these children to learn another language. This is also of value for our uh families that bring a different language to the table, and now they can see that we are recognizing their language as part of the education of their children. So we are very excited. We're moving forward, because this is just one little step. We have a very innovative uh leader here. Uh, Dr. Burks is pushing us to look at thinking out of the box, to really look beyond the small picture, no, the big picture. And this is what we are doing. We are thinking out of the box. We're pushing forward with initiatives that are going to give our children uh a better education and using the skills that they are bringing from home and also valuing the fact that we have so many, you know, diverse children in our district. Future goals, as I said, we are innovative now, we're looking at uh giving a gold seal to the students that couldn't make it, but they are in the process. We are also going to look at our middle school programs and see how we can incentivize our eighth graders, seventh graders to continue the development of more languages. We also would like uh an additional A P class in in German. Uh, we have two German teachers that are very energetic, they are very much, you know, in the team of moving forward. We would like to maintain that, and what we are proposing is a summer language culture camps for our children at the elementary level, middle school level, and high school, where they can have fun with languages in a camp, where they are going to learn a lot of the traditions from, you know, Germany, from um our Spanish-speaking population, Arabic, we have many Arabic teachers. We would love to include word language in Arabic in our high schools. That could be something innovative for all of our Arabic-speaking communities to see their language also offered in the high school. Okay, so that's uh the Seal of Bilitracy, these are the future uh goals that we have. Um, and I will uh really, you know, like you to be on our team moving forward. Uh, we would love to come here and tell you how many more students we are impacting with our uh innovative programs, and I thank you for uh all you do to improve the education of all children in the Allentown School District. Uh, thank you for staying this late and still awake and ready to go, so I would like you to uh really move uh, or if you have questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, do we know do we know how many college credits students receive for having the seal?
Uh, it depends on the school.
Yeah, I.
Approximately, you know, uh, it usually the college credits that they will give maybe to the very first uh course that they have between two to three credits. But it depends on the uh college or university. But they do recognize, you know, all of those universities are really very much on board with that idea.
Okay, thank you.
So my question would be, um this is a great idea. This is a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
But I have a question.
Sure.
What is the equivalent to bilitracy for people like myself, who only speaks one language? Because we want to make sure that we are, because I know I spoke about this before um about trying to find something within district to be able to teach our students, not just Spanish, the grammar part, but we want our kids to have fluency.
Exactly.
And so, and then one of the, when I first moved here, but my kid was in Head Start, who's now graduating from high school. The classroom that they had to put him in, because there wasn't any room, was a part, was all Spanish-speaking kids. But the teachers in the classroom spoke English and Spanish. And they, I had a choice, and I chose to put him there.
Yeah.
But he's eighteen, he still doesn't speak Spanish, so there's a problem.
Mm-hmm.
You understand? So I'm trying to figure out, and I'm gonna push for this.
Mm-hmm.
Because if we're gonna be, we're gonna push equity.
Yes.
We want all of our students to be able to speak more than one language.
And that moves us to the next project that we have. And the next project is really to start uh a dual immersion uh school. Where children who are English speakers and children who are Spanish dominant at that point, you know, we're starting with Spanish, but maybe we can have Arabic, but at this point, Spanish, uh, will be able to start from pre-K uh all the way up to grade five and then maintain the language in grades six through twelve, developing proficiency. And these children will actually have half of the day taught in English and the other half of the day in Spanish. And they are going to develop bilitracy, because the goal is to have them reading and writing in both languages at a grade level. So it is not just one little class where they learn, you know, like uh uh mesa, so, you know, words, no, it is going to be a program, an academic program, which is something that many other states have. In Virginia, we have immersion programs in different languages, that it will be our goal, if we have really the capacity to do that, we're going to start with this school. Uh, of course, our leader has given us already the charge to move forward uh to start with pre-K, uh K one and two, which are, you know, uh, it's a a significant room of group of students that will be able to develop that proficiency. I agree with you, we need to have equity, we need to improve our word language programs to develop students that are proficient, so our Seal of Bilitracy will really enhance all students, not just some.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Ms. Conover. Ms. Brown Noel.
Go first.
I I just want to sound in our our uh human resources team uh led led by Mr. Sang and the English lan- learner team. They are working on a comprehensive recruitment strategy uh with our sister city, along with a partnership with uh other partners in the district of the Dominican Republic, as well as Puerto Rico and others, to, so we can recruit enough teachers, so that process is underway, and we also work with a another provider, I I G, I A G, which they recruit teachers from around the world, so we are moving forward a lot sooner in our recruitment efforts, because the team has been given a charge that the expectation that in the fall, we will have a dual language school.
Yeah, this is the first step that we were asked to do, so we are moving forward with all of the other steps.
I am super happy.
Ah, I am.
Very happy. Okay, so here's why.
Okay.
Over the summer, and Anna Tiberio can attest to this, we did a program in South Mountain for the English language learners. Because they don't generally get programming that really, it's like fun for them, they're just like constantly learn English, learn English, learn English. And in the program, they were able to embrace their culture, and they did podcasting in Spanish, they did a short film in Spanish, and they loved it.
Sure.
Now, the fact that they can do something like this and get a seal on it to say, hey, I can keep my culture, right? Because that's what we, sometimes we don't realize when we're doing these English language classes, that they kind of feel like they need to get away from their culture, but now we're telling them, no, embrace your culture, learn this new culture, embrace it, keep both of them, and actually, it's gonna be an asset for you in the future. This is amazing.
Yes.
I'm so happy about this, and I know that the kids are gonna be excited about it.
We are very excited, and the community is excited.
Yes.
Because uh it is very much a recognition of the value of other cultures and the value that we bring to the table. So thank you, thank you.
And it's not just Spanish.
No, no, it could be.
It's not just Spanish, because like the Creole, the the kids, like the Haitian kids, like they were their part of the program too, so it's so many immigrants, you know, and I I like what Ms. Conover said, yes, because I took Spanish. And I tell you, I got nineties all the way up through high school, but ask me to speak it.
Yeah, I know.
I know what adios means.
Right?
Adios, amigo.
It's a whole different thing. I can write it, but I can't speak it, so yes, I love the fact that we're gonna step venture into this place where we're gonna be able to have our kids writing and speaking it. You know, at an early age, I love this.
Mm-hmm.
Love it.
Well, this is great, so we're gonna, I would like for someone to make a motion, so we can.
First, Ms. Brown Noel.
I'll second, Ms. Wilt. Thank you, um. We already had our discussion, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Hearing, seeing, none, this moves on to our next regular board meeting of the sixteen. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
We're gonna move on to our next item on our agenda, which is the mindset, Ms. Pollak. Seven Mindset Social Emotional Learning Curriculum.
Good evening. I would like to request the Board's approval of the agreement between the Allentown School District and Seven Mindsets for the purchase of a social emotional learning curriculum as a pilot program for our students in middle school in grades six through eight. Um, tonight, the team from Seven Mindsets is joining us. Um, Jeff Waller, the co-founder and author of Seven Mindsets, Chelsea Buchanan, the Director of Partner Solutions, and also Cedric um Henderson, the Regional Vice President of Sales, who will um help us learn a little more about Seven Mindsets and answer any questions you have about the program.
So as you guys are coming to the podium, I don't want to rush you, but if you've done this before, please feel free to be a little, you know, you can speed it up, we're not gonna judge you.
Okay. Ms. Conover, I just want, is it okay for the Board, there's a book that supports the curricula that they're gonna present, is it okay for us to distribute?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for the book, I was looking at those books earlier.
Absolutely, we brought them just for you all.
Thank you.
In the interest of time, I'll go ahead and just say greetings and thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you to Superintendent Burks and the esteemed Board members for an opportunity to share with you um our social emotional learning curriculum, the Seven Mindsets. Um, as um Ms. Pollak has has mentioned, my name is Cedric Harrison. I'm the Regional Vice President of Sales for Seven Mindsets, and I've brought with me our co-founder and co-author of Seven Mindsets, Jeff Waller, and our um Director of Solutions, Ms. Chelsea Buchanan. Our goal tonight is to talk to you about how we align with the mission of Allentown. Our goal tonight is to talk to you about how we align with the mission of Allentown School District and how we believe we can enhance and help support um through our social emotional learning curriculum, the initiatives that you put in place. We're gonna tell you about our program, explain to you what it does, give you the why behind it. And then we're gonna explain to you about how we will implement and ensure success of the program for your sixth through eighth grade classrooms. Oh, sorry. So, um. At Seven Mindsets, we deeply understand the vital role of social emotional learning, trauma sensitive schools, health and wellness initiatives, and how those play in shaping the Allentown School District's commitment to fostering a a positive supportive learning environment for all students. Um, we acknowledge that these initiatives are integral components of your multifaceted plan designed to enhance the climate, culture, and equity within your schools. Our recognition of the district's challenges, which include teacher recruitment and retention, student absenteeism, systemic equity, and family and community engagement, it motivates us to offer our robust culturally relevant, social emotional curriculum. We believe it will prove to be an indispensable asset to your ongoing efforts. We are aware of the unique demographic context of your district. You serve a substantial population of Hispanic and Latino students and families, even as your staff's majority does not necessarily identify as Hispanic and Latino. This underscores the necessity for creating meaningful lasting connections between students, families, and staff of diverse cultural backgrounds, which is crucial to your district's success. So in a partnership with Seven Mindsets, we envision delivering a comprehensive, castle-aligned, multi-tiered, structured curriculum for your sixth, seventh, and eighth grade classrooms in this pilot. This collaboration will equip Allentown with the essential resources necessary to cultivate a nurturing school culture, stimulate active family engagement, and provide the emotional support needed in every classroom. Together, we believe that we can accelerate the progress towards your district's ambitions, ambitious mission. So now I'm gonna bring Jeff Waller. He's gonna give you the background behind the the development of Seven Mindsets.
Thank you Cedric. Um, the uh the the spark of the seven mindsets was, uh, it actually came to us from University of Pennsylvania. Um, and some work that was done by Dr. Martin Seligman of the Positive Psychology Department. We learned early on that the, the uh that the number of us young people experiencing depression had increased ten times between nineteen sixty and two thousand and ten. And and what really struck us was that the average onset age, which was twenty-nine and a half years old in nineteen sixty, when someone first experienced anxiety or depression, had decreased to fourteen and a half years old in two thousand and ten. And I can tell you those numbers are much lower uh now, um, post COVID. Um, and so for for us, we had, we had spent our entire life working with young people. We taught financial literacy and college and career readiness and entrepreneurship. And uh it was sort of a catastrophic data point because if you look at it, it it almost tells you that the the collective human condition's in decline. Um, and especially for our young people. And so we decided to to take our life savings and and uh invested into a three-year research study. And we asked ourselves, why is it that uh some people struggle and and suffer, yet others thrive? And and what's the fundamental difference between those two groups? And we figured if we could answer that question, that we could ju- just might be able to help move the dial and uh help young people um thrive. And what we learned is it's not, it's not what we know. It's it's how we think. It's it's not our skill sets, it's our mindsets, it's our attitudes and our perspectives that building us the intrinsic motivation to acquire the skill sets that that we need to to thrive in in a future, right, that we don't necessarily understand. And um that was the genesis of the seven mindsets and uh we we kicked this off with the pilot. It was at a a middle school in Roswell, Georgia. It was with fifty-one at-risk kids and the way that they wanted to measure the effectiveness of our program was can you help these kids pass the eighth grade portion of the standardized math test? And uh we took those fifty-one kids, we we worked with them for twenty weeks prior to our program. Um, twelve of the fifty-one kids had passed the eighth grade portion. And that's the leading indicator on whether they matriculate and to graduate. Um, after our program, forty-one of the fifty-one students passed the math portion of the state standardized test. And there was one young man, I'm gonna call him Daniel. Um, and and at the beginning of the of the event, he didn't want to participate. He told us uh he didn't want to be there. Um, it turned out he he took to it really well. And at the end, uh, you know, he stood up and shared his dream. He was a a young Latino in in Roswell who feared police. Um, he lived his life in fear and he wanted to become a police officer. He wanted to be uh a a sign of security and comfort for kids like him in his community. He's now a police officer in Gwinnett County, Georgia. Um, but the uh, the the greatest, the greatest thing we heard was the the next week, we got a call from his uh his math teacher. And she said, Daniel came up and talked to me today for the first time. I've never heard Daniel talk other than when I call roll, they'll just say president or here. That's the only time I ever heard a word come out. He came up to me and he told me that he wanted to retake his math test because his C's not good enough anymore. Right? That's the power of mindsets, right? We've we've lit a fuse in that kid so he can start making different decisions and taking different actions and take control of his future. And so that way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So because we'd worked with young people for so long, I I think the uh the thing I'm most proud of is that the seven language provides a common language and lexicon that's engaging and relevant. Um, and so uh these are the seven mindsets. Everything is possible. It's just about instilling hope, right? If you can change the way you think about yourself, your environment and your future, you're gonna, you're gonna feel better and you're gonna take different actions and make different decisions. Passion first is about figuring out how you can take your talents, your interests, your desires, your values, and your learned experiences and apply them to the needs of the world. And that's where you can achieve optimal performance and ultimately the reward, the world will reward you in kind. We are connected. It's all about making our lives exponential with, for, and through others. Right? Everyone that comes in our life can help us, hurt us, do nothing for us. And so if we can work with, for, and through others, we can accomplish more and achieve more in life. Hundred percent accountable is about taking control. Understanding that my actions, my decisions uh will dictate results and outcomes, and those outcomes will dictate future circumstances. So I have control. Um, attitude of gratitude uh is about seeing the positives, you know, if you if you uh if you focus on what's not working, what you don't like about yourself, uh maybe the relationships, those are the things that are gonna expand your life. But if we can just take a look, right, at those things that are working, the parts of ourselves that we do like, the people that empower us, we can use those as a building block. Um, live to give is about serving your community and and the most empowering thing you can do is help somebody. It makes you feel important. It makes you feel good. And the time is now is about fully engaging in the present and taking advantage of every moment that you have. So those are the seven mindsets. And I just think fundamentally, uh, our belief is that every child uh has an opportunity to live a a meaningful, fulfilling, and happy life. They're not broken. We're not fixing them. What we need to do is give them attitudes and perspectives that allow them to express their uniqueness um and live that life that we want them to all live. And so I'm gonna bring up my partner, Chelsea Buchanan.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, I I want to take a moment and I know that Jeff just went over the mindset with you. My favorite mindset is attitude of gratitude. And so just to tell you that we're very thankful to be here with you today and thankful to be surrounded by these beautiful pictures of your students. Um, I was a former educator. I taught kindergarten and first grade for a long time. Um, so to watch the performances of the kids, we're just thankful to be here. Uh, and and what does this look like in our schools? So as we implement in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we um work with students and teachers to make sure that we are um working with the whole child. You've talked about whole child and mental health and wellbeing quite a lot tonight. Uh, and so we have the ability with our resources to um look at our chi- our children on in tier one. So a teacher facilitated uh communication, making sure that we're building relationships in our schools. That's the number one thing that we want to make sure that we cultivate in our classrooms, our relationships and communication. Jeff talked to you a lot about our common language. That's what we're doing with the seven mindsets is creating that common language and relationships in our uh classrooms. We also have tier two and tier three intervention resources because we know that there are kids that need a little bit more love and a few more resources. So we have those for you. Um, mental health and prevention resources uh that we can provide through the seven mindsets. And we also have a a high-quality assessment, a robust assessment component that gives students individualized pathways to help them with exactly what they need, the skills and topics that they need to spend more time with. So um if you can go to the next slide. Oh, nope, it worked. Perfect. Uh, so the great thing is that we have coaches that work with you. They work with you at the district level with your district team. They work with your campus leaders, your teacher leaders uh to make sure that the implementation uh coaching is ongoing. We come in and do amazing professional development to make sure that the educators and the administrators and that you all as district staff uh know exactly what works, what doesn't work, how to best um support your students. But we give you coaching and support all along the way as well because we really want to be a partner with you in this work. Uh, we have not just resources for students, but also resources for educators because we know that teacher retention, making sure that our teachers are feel safe and supported here, we have resources for them as well. This is taught all in about thirty minutes a week. Uh, and the great thing is that it um can be prepared for in about ten to fifteen minutes. And we have teachers that have really great conversations around these lessons. Our teachers tell us that they get just as much from these lessons as the students do from the conversations, the videos, the resources. Um, so in about thirty minutes a week, our full digital platform is completely in English and Spanish, transposed in English and Spanish, which will be great in your upcoming um dual language schools. We have lots of schools that they are taught in dual language schools. Uh, we have dashboards, assessment like that, like I talked about, and your students in K eight, or I'm sorry, in six, eight um will have videos, games, activities, ways to journal. But it all goes back to making sure that it's all about relationships and communication and them feeling safe and supported in their schools. Um, uh, and this is how it works. Uh, just quickly, we start with professional learning and coaching, but we continue to partner with you the entire time through your journey. Um, there are scaffolded curriculum and lessons uh all aligned to the castle competencies, all delivered through a digital platform. And we have um progress monitoring and assessment that wraps around it to make sure that we can guide instruction well. So from there, uh Jeff uh touched on these, but he's going to talk to you just quickly about more impact.
So yeah, yeah, we're we're uh, we're proud to serve over five million young people uh and teachers with our platform. Uh, we're in forty-seven states. Um, we work with some of the most conflict, complex school systems, uh Dallas, Texas, Charlotte. Uh, we work um with Tampa, Florida, the state of New Mexico, and Stride Learning, which is the largest uh virtual school provider. Um, we've done a lot of studies. There's many ways we can measure impact. This is a summary of of the independent studies that have been done on our program. And what we're most proud of is that uh we've shown significant impact in in the three major academic measures, achievement, behavior, and attendance. Um, the uh, the behavior study in New Caney uh has, while it's very different culturally, uh they're sixty-seven percent Latino and demographically, they're very similar to Allentown. And then um, we are the only company that's done a full peer-reviewed published study on pro-social behaviors of of resiliency and grit. And and why that's important is because resiliency is the antidote to anxiety and depression. Um, it is our ability to bounce back. And so we looked at uh sense of mastery, which is basically self-efficacy. Their their belief in their themselves, um and their ability to overcome adversity, sense of relatedness, how comfortable they are with uh their people, that they can find support they need to deal with adversity and emotional reactivity, which is, which is basically uh impact or um um uh just their ability to input, control their impulses. Um, and so we showed very significant impact and actually reduced their emotional reactivity, which is a pot as a sign. And we also used uh Carol Duckworth grit scales to demonstrate the student's ability to persevere, right, through complex, difficult challenge. Um, and so that's just a summary of the studies that have been done on the on the impacts that our program can have. And so I'm gonna bring Cedric up uh to wrap it up.
Thanks, Jeff. Pass the last five. So you might wanna know, you know, all we, a lot of times folks wanna know who are you working with? You know, and so we here in the state of Pennsylvania have an ongoing presence right now. We're in actually a hundred and thirty-seven other schools here in the state of Pennsylvania. And most recently, um in urban centers like the school district of Philadelphia. Um, we have about eighteen schools right now, including schools like the Ju- School of Juvenile Justice that are actually impl- have implemented in the year of two twenty twenty-three. And it's an ongoing um um customer base that's going in the school district of Philadelphia. We're also in the region. We also have schools in New York City, um Washington DC. And then um Jeff has also mentioned some of the larger school districts that we're working with, such as Hillsborough County School District in Florida, Dallas ISD in Texas, as well as Charlotte Mecklenburg School District in North Carolina. And so, and we're, as he said, we're also in forty-nine states, so we're about national presence. And so our our ask today is that, um, you know, we believe that what we are, what we have to offer is perfectly aligned with the initiatives that Allentown School District is um implementing in your school district. And we believe this pilot in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade will be really meaningful and prove itself to be a positive impact on the student's social, emotional wellness as well as mental health. So we thank you for the opportunity and we open the opportunity to ask any questions that you may have of our team.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, I just would like to say thank you for staying till almost ten o'clock this evening to present to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
May I have a motion to move this item to our next regular board meeting scheduled for next week?
I'll make that motion, Mrs. Will.
I second, Ms. Brown Noel.
All in favor, please let it be known by Saint I.
I.
Are there any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, this move to our next regular board meeting next week. Thank you very much. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Um, at this time, I'm gonna ask that uh Mr. Pasquale come forward and um present the uh action items regarding Allentown Police Department. MOU.
Good evening. Uh, Sergeant Williams from uh Allentown Police Department has joined us tonight. Uh, we're gonna request the board's approval to consider accepting signing the Allentown School District Memorandum of Understanding with Allentown Police Department uh for the use of school resource officers. Safety Task Force Committee uh is committed to Allentown School District Mission of each and every student will graduate college and career ready by having individual needs met through active engagement in a rigorous, safe and learn nurturing environment. Is staying true to the mission and in compliance with the Department of Education rules and regulations by annual review of our memorandum of understanding. The safety task force met on Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and Tuesday, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three to review the existing memorandum of understanding. The review examined the language of the existing MOU, compared it to the other known memorandums of sta- memorandums of understandings and evaluated its effectiveness with past incidents. After thorough review and discussion, the committee unanimously agreed the memorandum of understanding is still relevant and no changes were needed. The memorandum of understanding will serve its intended purposes of ensuring a safe school environment and clarifying the partnership roles of Allentown School District and the Allentown Police Department. Do you have any questions? Sergeant Williams is here to respond as well.
Mm hmm. I, I, you have a question?
Um, I have a question. I have more of a comment. I'm very surprised that no changes were requested because I know we've talked about changes and one change specifically um that I personally have a problem with, and I know some of my colleagues do as well is under parental notification that the way this MOU reads says that it's not required, but it's recommended that a parent or other adult be present during interviews with our students.
And we've been addressing that, um. Dr. Burks has made it clear um that notifications will be made. Um, we've had several incidents occur this year. Um, but we've done it collaboratively with Allentown. Um, but we've done it collaboratively with Allentown um Police Department in how that notification would be made, the information that we could or could not release. Um, so we are collaborating, we're not just releasing information and doing things, we're making sure that we're doing it collectively with Allentown Police Department. But notifications most certainly are being made to parents in all cases. And we have already done that this year.
But it's not in writing.
Yeah.
It, it's not in violation of the MOU. So I think, and again, the language of this is in, it has been for specific incidents or things. And I think the information released at times, like I said, Dr. Burks has made it clear, uh, we have enforced it. APD is on the same page. He was part of the, the process of developing it and designing um this. And he may be able to speak better to the language uh that you're speaking to. They said it in practice and what's occurring, um, there hasn't been a violation. And like I said, it's being done by practice and by policy.
So if I may, you can come, come forward, but I want to make a comment too. Um, so I hear what you're saying, Mr. Pasquale about it's not a violation. And I hear what you're saying, I, I, I heard you read something that said based on past. So that must have been what's going on, I guess now. But at the same time, you know, I don't know that we can say that person's rights haven't been violated. Because just because a person hasn't come forward. And to say that myself as a parent, my rights have been violated does not mean that we're not violating the rights of the parents. So this is what I'm saying. Because as a parent, I have an understanding that if it ain't written, it don't exist. And so we have to come, and I'm on that safety, whatever. I just wasn't there at the last meeting, I was out of town at a funeral. We have to figure out a way where the language can support what it is that we're trying to do. We cannot make or approve, that's how I'm feeling, this is how I'm feeling. This MOU with a language in there, with us knowing that it's a possibility, that if somebody besides yourself decides that they want to do whatever they want to do and they're going to do it, we're leaving ourselves, making, allowing ourselves to be um vulnerable. So we have to come up with something, some other language. Um, we all know what has gone on in the world when it comes to students um, and law enforcement. And I don't know that as a parent, that I could say that this is okay tonight. And it's not a reflection of you, it's a reflection of what we have to do language wise in the city of Allentown to ensure that we're keeping our students safe.
I, I, I think this might answer both questions or both concerns. Because this was an issue that was arduously discussed during the creation of this MOU two years ago. The section that you are referring to ma'am subsection or section nine uh subsection B where the language reads while not required, it is recommended that the district and or police notify a parent or other interested adult to be present during the interview. That paragraph specifically deals with victims or witnesses. There is a different paragraph and a whole different set of language that applies constitutionally and properly speaking, to your point, Ms. Conover. If someone is a suspect. So what this means is Sally has her bicycle stolen and comes in and wants to report it to the SRO at Allen. There is no constitutional requirement at that point that the officer says, hey, I need to notify your mother before I can take a report from you that someone stole your bicycle. Now, most of our officers, if not all, I, well, I could tell you all in the SRO role are going to do that anyway. And that's why this language was put there. The language in this MOU is role specific as it applies to the Constitution. So to your point, Ms. Conover, as we arduously went through a couple of years ago. Uh, that is why there are certain specific languages broken down by role to make sure that there is no ambiguity where the Constitution applies and where it does not apply. In this particular case, the subparagraph you are reading is for victims or witnesses.
So could you put the word victim or witnesses in it?
It's in there.
Say it again?
Subparagraph B begins, victims and witnesses uh may speak to the police at any time if they so choose and shall be given the opportunity by the district and or police, shall. By definition, I mean, that means the action is required or prohibited. Which is why I said earlier, a few moments ago, I know all my SROs are going to do that because that's in the MOU here. If, for example, a patrol officer responds uh to a particular school, using that case example to take a report of a stolen bicycle. They may not know about this MOU per se, this specific language, but they're still going to take the report anyway. And there are no constitutional requirements that kick in at that point. But all of my SROs, in accordance with this MOU, are going to call, are going to notify a parent or other interested adult to be present prior to the interview. So continuing with the language of this MOU that's already there, the SRO calls uh Sally's mom and says, hey, just to let you know, your daughter is here because someone stole her bike. I'm taking the report from her now, answering any questions on behalf of the parent, filing the report and then forwarding that report to our investigative division for follow-up if necessary. Many times the SROs are able to do their own investigations and clear that crime. Nevertheless, to the point of the MOU, the next sentence then reads, while not required, it is recommended that the district and or police notify a parent or other interested adult to be present during the interview, which is the, the notification is going to be. So coming back to my example, if we call Sally's mom and they say, oh, that's okay. Thank you very much, officer, take the report, hey, how is she going to get home today? We'll collaborate with the district, we'll make sure that she gets home safely, okay? Cool, and then they hang up, but if the mom were to say, hey, I'd like to be a part of the interview, sure, come on in. It's not required, but every opportunity is afforded, but that's specifically designed by role and that language is already there.
So I was reading this more to include all three, because if you look at nine A, it speaks to victims, witnesses or suspects.
It does, but it also says uh preceding that, that the police will try to conduct all the interviews outside of the school day and then provides the definition of interviews of students can be generally categorized into three types, victims, suspects or witnesses, correct? Then subparagraph B goes into victims and witnesses as those categories and defines the roles I've just explained. So the particular section that you pointed to and the language that you pointed to. Uh, and then that Ms. Conover said, hey, that might leave some ambiguity for us regarding the Constitution does not apply. It specifically deals with victims or witnesses and the parent is going to be notified and will have the opportunity to be present for any interview, even if it's, uh, you know, uh, my bike was stolen, if they so desire. But if they don't, there is no constitutional requirement that everything stop until a parent can be there. The officer can take the report, the student can then go home, back to class or whatever the situation is. That's the purpose of that paragraph, you can report a crime and speak to a police officer without uh 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 having your parent there. If, if uh, if it is so desired.
I'm not doing that. I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to do that, I'm reading this, I'm not going to do that.
Why is there no section for suspects speaking to police should have a parent there?
It's subsection C. That's why I was just saying, jump, jump to C and give us a little bit clarify.
Where does it mention parents?
Time if they so choose, so.
Yeah, it does mention parents in C.
You telling me that my fifteen year old, sixteen year old kid can speak to the police or not, they don't know enough. By the time I get there as a parent, that kid might be carted off somewhere and I don't have no, I'm not going to give permission for that.
First, the first paragraph of, or the first sentence of subsection C says that suspects may speak to the police at any time they so choose, but it is important to read the entire paragraph because, oops, my laptop just cut out on me.
Parental notification, interviews and custody of students and property. This is non, whenever possible.
I see. And then it says, if the police are conducting the interview. Hold on, hold on.
I'm talking about C right now though.
But, okay.
And that, that, that's what I was about to answer.
Yes, answer that.
Subsection C, suspects may speak to the police at any time if they so choose. If the police are conducting the interview, it is their responsibility to ensure that all applicable laws are followed to safeguard constitutional rights. The separation there is to say that if we are doing that, the burden is incumbent upon us to make sure that all constitutional rights are safeguarded, not ASD. That is the intention behind that paragraph to say that if we're performing our duties, it is incumbent upon our responsibility. I would make the analogy that if a teacher is teaching a particular subject, is in, it is incumbent upon the teacher to proffer knowledge toward that particular subject. That was uh the sentiment behind this sub, or behind this paragraph.
So my question in C is, you're saying that you have to follow the constitutional rights. In the Constitution, does it state that you have to notify the parents?
Uh, actually it does, not in the Constitution.
So then nothing here states that you have to notify the parents?
But, but nevertheless, when there, there is a, there is a a notification for a parent or interested adult, if that cannot be done, there are certain stipulations then that we have to follow.
But, so you're saying you will notify the parents if you're talking to a suspect?
Yes.
Where does it state that in writing?
It, it, it does not in this, it does not state that specifically. It states what it does because that is the burden incumbent upon us. Is that necessary, if you want to get very technical, is that necessary one hundred percent of the time? No, it is not. Uh, and there are certain, I beg your pardon?
And who is that up to?
Uh, that, well, that's up to the facts and circumstances of the particular case. For example, what I can tell you is in about ninety-five percent of the cases, that is going to occur. When you deal with that small five percent, a typical example might be someone who is seventeen, has had contact with law enforcement before, is aware of how the system works and has said uh uh, hey, I, I, I don't want my parents to know about this, so I'll talk to you. And as long as we can provide the burden of proof that that conversation is knowing, intelligent and voluntary, and it's going to be because everything's audio and video recorded, then we can continue that conversation. So, but that is an extremely small percentage of the case and everything, when you come into our room, tape goes on when you come in the room, doesn't go off till you leave.
But the audio and video recording only gets.
Real quick, because only, we just recently had this and the school district then said, hey, we're making a notification. Um, so again, they came to the school, it was a seventeen year old, again, almost exactly what is describing here. Um, and so again, um, Dr. Burke said, no, it's happening this way. So the school district, you came on school property, you want to report it here, you invited the police here. The student did, seventeen year old said, come here, come to the school and I'll give a statement of this thing that happened. You came here, you're in our house, we're notify, notifying parents.
Was that a suspect?
That was the, no, that was just, uh, somebody.
So referring to suspects right now.
Same thing I'm thinking of, that, that was a witness, but specifically to your point is the paragraph here is placing the burden upon us to make sure that the things are done properly, that we can articulate, document and justify those things.
I understand that a hundred percent, but it wouldn't hurt to put it in writing.
I'm not.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure how much more specific we can get to say, unless you want some type of detail of procedure, which is fact specific in criminal cases, that's the difficulty of uh, that, that would be the difficulty of trying to itemize every single circumstance.
Not asking for an itemization of everything, I'm asking for, why can't we state that we will contact parents of suspects? I understand you're saying you will do everything you're supposed to, but I don't understand why it's so hard to just put that part in writing.
But when, when you say we, to whom are you referring?
Police.
Referring to the police or the district?
The district will do that because Dr. Burks will make sure that the district does that. But I need to know that the police on their end will do that as well. Because you put that in writing for victims and witnesses, even though the district will do that. Why did you not put that in writing for suspects?
Well, because with our policy, following the Constitution, that's what's going to happen. Notification is going to be there.
You just told me that the Constitution does not state that you have to contact or notify the parents.
And then I followed up with that by saying the constant, those words, it's just like the old television adage, I want my phone call. That's not in the Constitution, so very specific to your question, no, that's not in the Constitution. However, the interpretation of the US as well as the state constitution regarding the juvenile act, which is what we are bound to follow, details the steps that we need to follow. Parental notification is one of those steps.
Well, I want my phone call.
Okay.
And then I'm, I'm getting a point, no, 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 that's what I'm trying to say. Our kids, nor the, nor our parents, law enforcement, we don't know half of this, what you're talking. But what we do know is that we're not going to put our kids' fate in your law enforcement's hands. That's what we do know. We know that this language here in this MOU does not work for us. And so I don't, I, there's no way we're going to be sold on this. Because clearly, just by sitting here and listening, it's too much power the APD has on our kids. So I'm going to tell you straight up, matter of fact, I'm, what, I'm going to tell y'all a real quick story to wake up. When I hit the soil here in Allentown, Pennsylvania, my kid was going to school at Roosevelt. I had an adult daughter, maybe she's about nineteen. She drove my kid around the corner of the school, came home, parked the car. I got a knock on my door, police at the front door. I saw him before he knocked on the door, he was looking at the cars, knocked on my door and said that somebody hit somebody, it's this lady's car. Was filling the hood of the car. My daughter went down to the, when her court day came, because she didn't hit nobody. I went down because I'm a mother and put my name on the court docket so that when she went in there, because she was driving my car, that I would be in there. When we sat in that, over there by the IHOP. When we sat in that room, I heard the police officer in the next room saying, don't worry ma'am, don't matter, the woman from New Jersey already agreed that she hit you and you don't have to worry. Me being who I am, peeked my head in the door and said, that's a lie from hell. This officer looked me in the face and said, she's an adult, you don't have nothing to say. I said, well, I'm going in there, he said, no, you can't even come in. Cause you're not on the court paperwork. And he told my daughter, he said, if you don't agree that say that this happened, it's going to turn into a criminal case. And she started crying and I looked at her and I said, I work four jobs, shut up. You ain't going to stay here. And when the judge walked out, I said, just listen to what I have to say, please, your honor. And it was fortunate enough that I was on that docket, this happened in Allentown. We went in there, things got dismissed, but so I'm saying all this to say, do you think as a parent, knowing what I know, that I'm going to put my kid or anybody's kid in Allentown's fate in APD's hand? That's a lie from hell, this has to change. Nobody's kid, including mine, is going to be talked to, searched without me or my husband being present. And that's my position tonight.
Well, I think it's unfair to ask me to comment on facts or situations that I haven't been a part of. So I'm not going to speak factually to what you just described because I don't know anything about it. What I will say is that uh, the MOU of which you were a part of two years ago, if memory serves, that we all drafted together, this has worked very successfully over the last two years. If you can come and bring a similar fact pattern to me that directly involves this MOU where something went off course, then that's something that I would address within the scope of the MOU. Because the analogy that I would give to you is if somebody tries to play Beethoven and does it poorly, you don't blame Beethoven, you don't blame the musical notes if they can't read the music. So I would make that analogy here to say, the document is a living, breathing, functional document that has served everyone well over these last two years. Moreover, at the previous steering committees of which uh Brandon mentioned that you were a part of, I wish you would have brought this up then, we could have tried to tackle it then.
Bring it up, but then we brought up that verbiage, that part, and I don't make the decision for the full board.
No, I, I, I understand.
You, you said if I could bring, because I just told you my personal experience that happened over what, eleven years ago? But I'm sure if we were really going to pull poll the district, we have a, this room filled with families coming through here saying that their, their rights were violated. We know that, I'm sure the district has had complaints. So that's not, it's not working, but and, and that's to say, forget about last year, it's not working today. Maybe, maybe we, maybe this is something that, that we weren't able to actually. Maybe maybe we maybe this is something that that we weren't able to actually vet last year, because we didn't know last year what we know now. But if you're gonna tell me in that section nine, A, B, C, D, all the way down to F, that if my kid is called into a room, that they have a right to speak to an officer, to speak to someone without their parent being present? Or you're gonna point to a constitution, if you're gonna tell me that that's that's what you want us to agree to or me to agree to, that's I'm not agreeing to that. And I'm sure we could find some other kind of verbiage that's gonna work in our favor, that's gonna be conducive to our kids' rights.
I just wanna say, I I apologize, they'll be quick. I was not here two years ago, sitting in this seat. Um, so I was not a part of that, I'm not part of the safety task force, but I will say this. I would like to know if there's anybody in this room that would agree to speak to any law enforcement officer without an attorney, because the answer is no, if they're a suspect. Why are we okay with letting our children speak to police officers if they're suspects?
That's not what the document says. And your initial comment about victims and witness, it's important to classify the role. That's what makes the difference here. So if Ms. Conover says, hey, we need to do some different verbiage in subsection C, fine. The issue is classifying the role, that is the most important thing.
And I think what we're saying is, we just need to add that parents need to be notified for suspects. That's what, is that what we're saying?
What happens if they say no to talking to you?
Give me more fact specific.
Yeah, it's a suspect, he says, I don't wanna talk to you.
Okay, it's done.
That's it.
Okay, so that goes to my line of questioning. Cause one, you said something about the constitution, you said that in the constitution, it doesn't say that they have to be, um, a parent have to be present. But it doesn't say that you don't have to put in the verbiage that they won't be notified. So to me, you have the ability to put that in there, because the constitution doesn't block you from adding that in there. So why are we choosing not to add it in there?
It well, understand, this is the first time that this has come up like this that I am aware of. The verbiage that is used of constitutional rights are all the rights that are applicable through the US, state constitution and applicable laws of the Commonwealth. That is the general term. When I said earlier about, hey, the phone call analogy, I was just using that to to try to shed some light on this that, you know, commonly you'll see on TV. Hey, do I, when do I get my phone call? Well, that's not actually specifically in the constitution. But what that has evolved into are the constitutional rights that are referred to as the broad category encompassed by all documents according to law, US, state and the applicable case law for the jurisdiction. That's why we hit that with the broadest possible terms, so that ironically, the reverse couldn't happen. Where we were so minute or so specific that somebody could point to this and say, well, it doesn't exactly say that in there. No, we hit it with the broadest possible terms to say, all of your, what have been interpreted as constitutional rights will be provided, no wiggle room.
Okay, so that's great, but with this one specific thing, we're saying we don't want it to be broad, right? Cause there's some things that are within a system that you can change, right? Which is the constitution, whatever policy that the APD goes by, right? But this is something that we can identify and place it in writing. There's nothing that's blocking it legally from us being able to put it in this MOU. And the MOU, as I see it, is a partnership between APD and Allentown School District. As I read this, to me, this is just a document of dictatorship. There is nothing in here where I feel like this is really like a partnership. Because so what Ms. Conover said, if someone, if the kid decides to say, no, they don't wanna, they don't wanna speak to you, a lot of kids don't know that they can say no, right? And what I want to re, I wanna reimagine this MOU, and this needs to have some education in there for our students to know, how do they interact with the police? Because if they don't know that they have the right to say no, they're gonna just talk. She just said. Without a lawyer.
Under that role, that is a mandatory requirement. They will be advised of rights and they will be told that you don't have to speak.
That piece I get, that piece I get. But at the same time, we've seen situations before where someone's a suspect and you don't necessarily, we know this. Someone doesn't say to that kid, oh, hey, you don't have to say anything, you just start asking them random questions. It's just question, it's it's not even like an interrogation, it's just random questions. And they don't know at that point that they can say no.
Well, there was some coaching, I just heard, and correct me, because if I'm wrong. Well, if you don't want your parent to know about this, you could talk to me or we can call your parent. And then they'll get, you know, that is manipulation.
And we don't, we don't want that, we want our students to to trust APD. Cause that's what you're not understanding, this is not something where we're going against.
And I'm thinking back two years, a couple of years ago.
But this isn't a situation where we're saying, oh, we don't trust APD to do their job. This is a situation where I feel like it covers APD and also covers ASD. And the fact that parents will be notified, regardless of what is happening, because these are minors. They're minors and they don't have the education, because that's not in this MOU. That's something that I would like to see placed in the MOU, at least a workshop per per quarter of how do you interact with the police, that builds the trust level between the police and the community. And the kids need to know what it's like to interact with the police, if they get pulled over outside or if, you know, if anything happens, how do you interact with police? So that's how I want us to reimagine this MOU as it is right now, this is, this isn't. I'm new, I'm new to the board, but the way I look at things, this is basic.
It is my translation of what I'm hearing here is that, and I understand from the perspective of the police department, that you're looking at it on the basis of constitutional rights. Because if I was coming from your perspective, that's what I would be raising. And that's what you train your police department to do is based upon what the constitutional requirements are to deal with suspects. And we're just talking about suspects right now on this issue. I think what I'm hearing from the board is the board wants an extra layer of protection, assuming the police department is willing to partner with the district. What they're saying is if a student of the Allentown School District is a suspect with one of your police officers, would the Allentown Police Department be willing to provide that student before that they would, you know, read their constitutional rights and start interrogating them? Uh, and provide a notification to the parents. That's really the issue, and I understand it imposes an additional level of responsibility on the officer that they would not normally have with a non ASD student, that's my translation of the difference in positions between the parties. And the question is, would the police department be willing as part of this memorandum of understanding to have an extra layer of Allentown School District student protection infused in the memorandum of understanding? I didn't cra- candidly understand it until I heard all of this discussion. And I'm not so sure that all of this was translated clearly in the discussions, but that's my 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 belief is if if that extra layer of protection was there and your officers were trained to deal with that, is that something you're willing to do?
Yeah, there there's no extra layer of protection that's required for ASD or any other student. To be very specific, to be very specific of what you're asking for, because that requirement is already there. It seems as though if I'm inferring everybody correctly, they just want to see some different language. Or what a a what the constitutional rights more specifically detail in terms of parental notification, which is covered in other sections, but if you wanted that specifically there, I, like I said, that's something we're already going to do, it's a requirement for us to do.
And then my suggestion, if that's the case, if you believe the language is already there, uh, and you're willing to commit to that based upon your representations today, and I have no reason to believe that your your intention is any different. If you can somehow uh come up with language that you're comfortable with to clarify that, that's something I think the board would seriously take into account. And we can finalize this memorandum of understanding, is that a fair characterization of the position?
Finalize it when?
Pardon me?
Finalize it when?
Uh, I would hope to be.
At the next board meeting?
At the next board, yeah, hopefully we can get, it it doesn't appear that we need a lot in the document, it just needs a a sentence or two to clarify.
Needed to be clear that we, that the kids will not be questioned or searched without their parents.
And we'll get a copy of this before the next board meeting to read over.
Well, that that's, you know, once again, this is a bilateral discussion. This is a partnership with the Allentown Police Department. I want them to have an opportunity to look at that, write it out and get it to us, hopefully as soon as possible, so that we can put this issue to bed and get it approved at our next board meeting.
That and I want more.
There's, there's hand signals.
So what I, thank you, Mr. Palmer, but I'm hearing two different things, and maybe I want to make sure I'm clear. There's one thing about contacting a parent and notifying parent, saying, hi, I'm here, the police are here, they wanna talk to your child. What I'm hearing from our school board directors and, you know, pushback if I'm wrong, you want us to, the police department to also wait for the parent to be present before they talk to the child. There's two different things.
I thought we were saying notify.
That's what I heard what Ms. Conover said.
That's, I know, I'm, I wanna be there.
Okay, cause that's two different things, I just wanna make sure we're clear.
I'm near my attorney. But nobody's gonna question my kid unless I'm there.
And they, y- you're correct, they're two different terms, they're both already here. More specific language is what is required, but to use Ms. Conover's example, if we were to call her in the in any role for that matter. If she was the parent and I said, hi, Ms. Conover, uh, your daughter's here to report her bicycle stolen, I'm gonna take the report, okay? And if she says, no, uh, I don't, I don't want you guys to talk at all until I'm there. I'll come pick her up from school or I'll come meet you at your office or I'll take her into the police desk and I'll do it there, fine. Done. It is that simple. If if her daughter is involved in some incident or 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 situation where she's arrested and brought in, parental notification is gonna be there, hey, we have your daughter here, you know, can you come down and pick her up? And as soon as she walks in, we're gonna talk, hey, this is, these are the facts that we have, would you like to discuss it, yes or no? And that's where it's either gonna continue or end. It's it's already there. Now, if if the concern is is with the, that, uh, and ironically, again, two years ago, it was too finite. Now it appears too broad, if the if the concern is simply.
Two years ago was a whole lot of other stuff going on, two years ago that we didn't want SROs in the building. There was a lot of stuff going on two years ago, and there's a lot of stuff that happened two years ago that we are finding out right now, so I hear you, let's stick with tonight.
If the English language was was perfectly clear, there wouldn't be the need for lawyers. So that it that it, which is true, uh, and I I think what I'm, uh, and and I like it, I like the need for lawyers. But but what I'm saying is, is that, um, I I think the board is looking for something more finite to deal with the specific situation. If an Allentown student is going to be questioned by the Allentown Police Department, that there will be mandatory parental notification prior to the questioning commencing.
Then what I would say is I need somebody from the board to communicate with me as far as the desire of this, because we've had two safety task force meetings, as as Brandon has indicated, uh, that have both said, let's go forward as is. So I I I can't do something about something I don't know about.
Okay, I'm just saying, what what you're hearing today, the board is here, we wanna get this done. And I think you've heard from the board, this is, you you can't, one person from the board can't be the communicator because one person of the board doesn't bind the entire board. We have the entire, well, all of the people who are present here, we have a quorum of the board present and what could we, could we say today that that request represents a majority view of the board? Is that a majority view of the board? So if that constitutes a majority view of the board, that's as clear as you're gonna get in terms of a direction, notwithstanding the safety forces and all the discussion that is taken. And unfortunately, perhaps this should have been communicated earlier with greater clarity. Didn't, okay, and to the extent that it didn't, uh, I will on behalf of the board, you know, plead and say, it should have been uh, communicated more clearly, right now, we've gotten the direction of the board. I think that should be enough for you to understand what our position is, because.
Well, and 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 that's where I would disagree, and I would say the difference between an error and a mistake is an error becomes a mistake when one fails to correct it. So while I can understand the general dynamic of the board, what I would like is is any members or I'll take everybody, let's go sit down with a pizza and as a facilitator outside of session, let's hammer this language out.
We can't, we can't as a whole board, go for some, we have the, we're subject to the sunshine law. This is, this is where we are, we're, we're, we're hammering it out right now, this is what we have.
I am aware of that, but what I want to avoid is me taking an interpretation, coming back with the document, and then at the next session saying, hey, we want this changed, and then we push it off and push it off and.
This is what I suggest, this is what I suggest. If you could go back as the result of this discussion with your perception, modify the language, get it to Dr. Burks, she'll get it to uh, somebody, me or somebody else in my office. We'll try to work it out and convey what we perceive the intent of the board is, and hopefully we'll get this done. This happens all the time, we're communicating language.
Yeah, we're just negotiating.
Let let me suggest the reverse. Could I ask the board to put together the sentiments that they would like to see expressed in the particular sections?
So.
We just told you.
One second, so literally in B, it states exactly what we wanted to say in C. So you could just copy the part. Yeah, you could just copy that part where it says, uh, if they shall be given the opportunity by the district and our police to notify a parent or other interested adult to be present prior to the interview. Okay, copy that.
But the while not required.
Right, change that.
Yeah.
Cause the role changes at that point.
Yeah, I stopped before that, so just copy paste that.
Well, all right, that's easy, anything else?
Yes. So the education piece, are you guys willing to tap into into that? Where we can do some workshops with the kids, whether it's quarterly. Um, but I feel like the kids need to learn.
Can we start that outside of the MOU? Making that part of it, because I think that there's some things that would have to be worked out and refined before putting it in there.
Okay.
Uh, there there is, there is an existing section therein where SROs in the district may co- may already do that within the MOU, and I think where where Brandon's going with that is, let's try to put together something along those lines, tweak it, see how well it works, and then you don't need the MOU to implement that, that can simply be a district policy. There's several sections of the MOU that already say, if the district brings that on as their policy, SROs will follow suit. That's also already in here. So we don't need that unless you wanted that very specifically in there. But I do think what he suggests i- is a wise roadmap to that conclusion.
I'm okay with that for now, but it is very, it's as important as everything else that's in this MOU. I don't want us to play down the fact that our kids are not educated in how to interact with police officer, it's a big deal. It helps your job and it also helps us. So I, that that's what I'm talking about, when I, when I say we need to reimagine what these MOUs look like in partnership, because we want you guys to have less incidents with our students, right? Right, that's the plan.
I I don't know if you're familiar with the numbers, but our numbers speak to exactly what you're describing. We have good SROs that at the building level, staff and students alike will attest to. Are, will you please everybody 100% of the time, I'm sure we're all educated enough to say, no, that's not going to happen. But do we enjoy a very good relationship of success where our officers know our students, their families? Where incidents happen and what's our first step? Peer mediation, conflict resolution, diversion before any type of introduction into the system, yes. We work with KSMST for any type of special or or emotional support. We work with the impact project on diversionary measures. for any type of special or, or emotional support, we work with the Impact Project on diversionary measures. Uh, my officers do peer mediation all the time. So what, uh, what you have just spoken of is what's already there. I'd like to have more of it, unfortunately, those resources aren't up to me. They're up to those with the rank above me, but of what I do have is very good. And I think anybody here at the building level uh, would, would be able to, would be able to attest to that.
Building level?
Yeah, Allen, dear.
No, I'm, I'm asking building level to attest.
So what are we gonna do?
Like, I'm so, you guys don't understand how serious I am about this. Okay, so this is what happened, right? I was at my community church meeting and one of the kids that was at the community meeting was actually at Allen when that active shooter situation happened.
Okay.
And she actually pulled out of the school, is now going virtual. And she told me about the incidents that happened, how, she, the way she had described that everything played out, I'm not even gonna discuss it here, that's something that I'm gonna speak to you guys about on the side. I'm gonna give you guys that luxury. But the education piece, and whether it's like educating about active shooters or, or education about like, you know, all the things that we're talking about right now, that you say that you guys do. We need to know for a fact that it is happening, and when it's happened, the frequency that it's happening, because it's that important. So when you say yes, speak to it on the educational, yes, I want them to tell me that it's happening, because students are telling me, it's not really happening.
And is your, well, you're right, well, as far as active shooter.
That's where my line of question.
As far as sample size, I'd say, let's discuss sample size, et cetera, but my officers submit monthly logs to that effect.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we have the data to support that.
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Burks, did you wanna say something?
Um, yes, um, thank you Sergeant Williams, um, and I do commend you and your team for working very closely with the district. And, you know, it's unfortunate where we are in the world right now. You know, there's some very strong positions of certain communities like ours about police, and so we can't act like we're insensitive to that. Um, how, that's why it's important that if you could get the language to me first, and then we still, and the board gave you its, um, position, maybe you can get it to me first, and I will still, as Attorney Satanic suggested, if we take a look and then present something to the board um, and for maybe some feedback. Uh, there were three, if, if the board president would, there were some board members who were part of the committee, maybe that can be a smaller sample, so we're not violating any of the laws, um, sunshine laws, just to kind of take a look and say, okay, I think this is what my colleagues feel before we get to next week, because we, and I just wanna remind all of us, if we, if the board does, we don't come to some type of consensus around this, the current memorandum of understanding stays in place. So if it's the board's desire for that to change, we need to move forward with this.
Well, unless, unless it's understood, I thought it was solved, cut, paste, B with C.
Well, I, I wanna see it, because people, most people are visual learners. And so, and when you do that, we wanna see it.
That's what you can expect to see.
No, and, and also, and that's good, we're gonna, we're gonna vote, I guess, to push, move this to the next board meeting. Contingent upon you giving us, we see it first before we actually vote on, is that what we're talking?
Yes.
But also, I'm remembering, because I was part of the task force and everybody felt the same way, it's all coming back to me. It was a policy issue, that's how you guys, we agreed. It was like, no, we not changing this here, because this is not where this needs to be changed, this is a policy issue. And we were supposed to look at a policy that would address what you're talking about. And so, we're gonna leave that back there, you're gonna change your language, I will take a motion for this to move to our next, next regular board meeting. Ms. Ortiz is there, second? Second, Ms. Will, all in favor, please let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Aye. Oppose. Um.
Let me just be, be clear. We're moving forward what we're getting from APD. Not the current.
Yeah, right, that's contingent of us agreeing, we'll, we'll take the regular vote then. Um, okay? And, um, so this moves, uh, Mr. Simpson? Tomson, am I saying your name?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we, Tomson, I don't need to be there already. My head, so was this everybody except one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, um, we're gonna go to the next thing, this is the last thing on our agenda. Right? What'd you say?
No old business, no new business.
No old business, no new business. I'm gonna have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, have a good night.
Good.